Just as a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the council tonight, please complete one of the blue speaker cards on the table back there and give it to the city clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Rigby.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lorrimore.
Here.
Mayor Tesari.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor James Turner of the Eastvale Bible Church, and will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our student liaison Natalie Diaz. Please stand.
No.
I'm sorry, not yet.
Don't stand yet.
Sorry. Got ahead of myself.
That's all we do. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come, we first say thank you. We're reminded of your word that says, unless the Lord builds a house, those who labor, labor in vain. Unless the Lord watches over a city, the watchman stays alert in vain. Now we come and we lift up the citizens of Eastvale. We thank you for them. We thank you for the families that are represented in this great city. And God, we thank you for these leaders who you have appointed. God, we pray that they would lead with wisdom, with insight, with understanding and compassion. God, that they would look to you, God, for direction. We pray for those who serve in this city, the first responders, God, those who provide support in this city. We pray that you would cover them and watch over them and bless them. And God, we lift up, Lord, this city's growth. God, that we might grow in such a way, God, that we would be a strong city, a city that is attractive, a city that nurtures and grows its people, Lord. Lord, we pray for the heart of this city, the heart of the city, Lord, that we might be unified, that we might be a city that truly reflects a community of quality. Now, God, we ask right now, a special blessing over those families, Lord, that are impacted in Manchester area. And God, we here in this city sit in relative safety, and so, God, we pray for the comfort and strength for those, Lord, that have been impacted. And we thank you, God, for those in this city who work so hard to make sure that our city... So again, God, we just thank you and praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Turner. Now, please stand. Natalie?
I hand over your card. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'd like the council to join me at the speakers podium for items three point one and three point two, and I'd like to invite Roosevelt High School City Hall intern Andrea Franco to the speakers podium.
I'm a federal head internship program at the city hall, and run through program work of the lights district and provides a basis for career preparation for all students, and enables them to acquire firsthand knowledge of business. Students are provided the opportunity to alter and build valuable experience and make the connection between career and business, about gaining work skills that will make them more employed throughout college. Andrea Franco was an intern for the city in the spring of 2017, where she shadowed the finance and budget department. She interned for approximately fifty hours and learned valuable skills including data entry, government financial systems, direct management. I'd like to thank Andrea for her commitment to the city and the city for her passion. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this better, you guys can hear me now? I was told I wasn't working the mic properly. Natalie, it's been a real pleasure having you with us. Our student liaison program was created by the city council partnership of the school district, and we recognize the youth of our community as a significant resource and desire and receive it with matters of interest to them. Natalie served as the student liaison from 2016 to 2017, and she attended city council meetings, as you can see tonight, and she provided community updates on Eastvale schools. She served as a commissioner of community resources for ASP, and she was recently selected by her peers to be associate student representative from 2017 to 18 school year. Thank you very much, Natalie, for your commitment to the city, and we wish you the best during the coming year.
Can you hear me now? I thought you were fine. I thought you were a little bit better.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I say, oh, I'll wait till this. If I can speak a little bit.
At this time, I'd like to invite Christopher Gray, Director of Transportation with WRCOG, to the speakers podium to provide the council with a presentation on the Tump program.
Do you remember the council? Thank you for having me here. As your mayor said, my name is Chris Gray, with the Western Riverside Council of Government, which is a regional planning agency, which the city of Eastvale is a member of. We regularly work with people like Michelle, Joe, who's left the room, and Talking, Craig, and other folks at your shop. So I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of things. One is we did this development impact fee comparison study for our members who wanted to share with you, and so I want to give you some information related to the transportation uniform mitigation fee program with WRCO administration. So roughly all of 2015, we were asked to do a comprehensive study of development impact fees throughout the western WRCO region, and we were looking, trying to answer a number of questions. For example, what is the Tump fee compared to other impact fees? How do impact fees for WRCO jurisdictions compare to neighboring jurisdictions? And also give everyone an estimate of their fees and also their neighbors' fees as well. So our key findings are, one, that development of all time pays a variety of fees to various reasons, different agencies, and a very small portion of those fees. On average, most of the development impact fees for most types of development are within regions comparable to their neighbors in San Bernardino with one exception. Development impact fees represent between five and ten percent of the average cost of a project, and we also noted that transportation investment has given economic benefits. So to do this study, we hired a consultant, and part of the consultant's work was to identify example projects. So the consultant went through real estate sales records, other information, and determined that for BSA purposes, we were going to go and buy sample projects, including a single family, multi-family, industrial project, retail project, and an office project. So these are the fees for the city of Eastvale. This is the typical fees paid for typical projects, and your fees are, for example, single family home in Eastvale pays on average about forty-three thousand dollars in issuance of building permit. So this is a breakdown of the fees. You pay a Tump fee, you pay MSHP, you pay water, sewer, parks and recreation fees, school fees. There's also, of course, the city that pays into the Murallo Road Bridge District, and also a citywide dip program. So you probably want to know how your fees compare with others. So this is Eastvale right here, and this is Corona. This is, uh, the group of Valley is right here. So, and this red line is the average. So for most of the fee categories, you're generally within the average. You're a little bit lower than Corona, because Corona's fees tend to be a little bit higher. You are roughly within comparable to group of Valley at Riverside. So for multi-family, we see the similar. You're slightly a little bit higher than what a Riverside, you don't have a lack. And you're very close to the countywide average. For industrial projects, again, very similar. For retail development, you're wide acting kind of like the WRCO region average. And in this case, if you're slightly higher, not very high in public engagement. So for office, it's, again, you're a little bit below the regional average, but you're roughly comparable to neighbors. One of the issues is that the single biggest fee that most development pays is water. So it's water connection fees. So if you're a single family house, their biggest fee is not traffic, it's not other impacts, it's water. And so a lot of the variation we see in fees are water fees, because water is usually a different fee basis. So here's a question of how do your fees compare with areas outside of WRCO? So the first slide, we see that the single family, you're a little bit less than San Bernardino, or San Bernardino County, but you're at Chino Hills, Ontario, Montana, areas like that. We also looked at the Mitchell Valley. For the multi-family, you're a little bit less. So one of our key findings was, retail fee is substantially higher than WRCO region than it is for San Bernardino County, and it's almost double. And so on average, it's about twenty-four dollars. For Eastvale, it's a little bit higher than the average, but for places like Chino Hills, Ontario, their fee is much lower. So for a lot of people, their conclusion is it's all because of the company, or reality it's not. It's, yes, the company is a fee that's unique to WRCO, but many jurisdictions also have local traffic mitigation fees. The water fees are a big issue. So that twenty-four dollars is about a third water fee, a third local city fee, and then for office and industrial, we're within the regional averages as well. So one of the other tasks we signed our consultant was to tell us what typical development costs are and how the impact fees rank on those. So we had them figure out about how much it costs a single family home, what does that average amount sell for? And so on average, the biggest thing they cost to build a house is the stuff in the house, and the labor to build it, so the walls, the interior furnishings, the building itself, and you're paying for the land, and you're designing the project, you pay the project title, of course, you would like to make some kind of a profit, and then you're paying your impact fees, and then you're paying for just work done on the site as well. But, to be brutally, to the difference quarter and behind you, that's, on average, you pay about forty-five thousand dollars a fee to all the agencies when you're both a family building. And for an average house, that sells about four hundred and eight thousand dollars, so it's about ten percent of the cost. So we're also asked to look at where the economic benefits of the Tump program, transportation investment. We, our consultant found that there's a substantial amount of economic benefit for funding transportation infrastructure. It generates jobs, it generates secondary land value, and then when you look at the fact that cities leverage their Tump funding to build projects, that realizes tremendous benefit. So I've also been asked by your city manager to give you a little bit of update on the Tump program. Some of you may, I was extremely familiar with Tump, some of you may not be as familiar. So Tump has been around since 2003. When the measuring sales tax was passed in 2003, there was a commitment as part of the sales tax materials that there would be a development impact, regional development impact fee program for travel. And the fee was implemented, and what this is, is a fee that's paid by all new development across the western Riverside County region, and it's cashier, impacts related to regional infrastructure. Tump was always intended to be a supplemental funding source, so cities are expected to use their own money, and gray, and being a Tump allows you to continue to receive your measuring fund. So this little snippet chart is how the Tump program actually works. We work on, every city adopts the Tump through ordinance, we have an administrative plan, there's a deed calculation handbook that says how to calculate fees, we prepare an annual report documenting how money is spent, we do a five-year expenditure report, we apply to state law. The next study which we are working on currently, in terms of what projects go on the network, the cities then ask for funding, and then projects are funded. Money that's collected by WRCO is given back to the cities, as well as RTA, RCA, and TCD, which uses funds. So one of the questions we often get is, well, how do projects get funded? And the answer is, it's complicated. So first of all, the city makes a request for a project to name the Tump network, and it's valued in as part of the analysis. We have quantitative evaluation, we determine based minimum criteria, we determine if the projects qualifies to be in the program, and then we verify whether the project has outside funding. And if for any of these reasons, a project comes out of the network. So when things might wonder what WRCO does, we're the program administrator, we prepare the nexus study, and we allocate the fees. The local jurisdictions actually do most of the work on Tump. They're collecting the fees, they're remitting the fees, the cities determine what projects are funded, the cities actually want to build the projects, so unfortunately, I don't get to actually dig anything, and the zones have the final say on if projects are funded, because there's a process where we group all the cities together and make decisions on the money. So we're currently working on a nexus study. The nexus study sets the fee that's allowed by law. The last act of study was adopted in 2009. We are in the process of updating the nexus study. We have the draft that's study out, we haven't received comments, we're sharing those comments and remembering these cases in our various committees. This is the current fee level that's in the nexus study. Based on our latest nexus study, the multi-family fee will go down, single family will go up slightly as there's small increases in all, except retail, which is a delicate fee. This chart, these more complicated, there are charts, shows all the changes we made in the nexus study. One of the things that directly touches our city is we've made adjustments to the fee based on SB 132, we're providing direct funding for five projects, three of which were the Tump network. So the Y9I container change used to be funded by the Tump network, we're seeing it funding directly to the city, so we removed about eighty million dollars of funding from the Tump network, which reduces the end of the budget. One of the issues we get is why the fee hasn't gone down more, we know the state pass and the gas pass. The challenge is that the funds which cities are receiving could be used for writing projects, things like road vehicles, safety projects created from stormwater, putting in traffic signals alike, assets in specific direction, it's difficult for us to speculate on whether the Tump needs to go down, if the city's creating additional funding. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions the council members have, and I'm always available to come meet with you, folks, if you may relate to something related to transportation, I've heard that very comfortably. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Question?
No. Thank you, Chris.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Lorrimore.
Thank you, thank you, Chris, for coming out. Due to the fact that I know a lot about Tump on the residential side, I'm not going to talk about that tonight.
Yes.
For possible conflict of interest reasons. But I do want to talk, I did, on that slide where you're talking about retail?
Yes.
I did have a couple of questions about that.
The fee study?
The bar?
Yeah, I can go back. Yep.
Thank you. So you were saying that that's a third each for water, city charges, and Tump?
Yes.
Okay. Then I saw later on in the later slide, it was a seventeen percent increase for retail?
Yes.
For the retail there, then, would it still be that same breakdown, or would it change?
Well, assuming the other fees stay the same, and that's an issue, because there are, as we said, there are multiple districts, so, but if the other fees stay the same, then Tump would be a larger percentage of that. So a spitballing that by head, that fee would then go up to about twenty-six dollars worth, but Tump would be a little bit larger percentage of that, but the point is that it's twenty-six dollars, it would be twenty-six dollars because of all these other things. And what I would also add is that within our region, we have seen some of our cities, like for instance, this is Murrieta, Temecula, and Willemore, all have retail fees close to forty dollars worth.
Okay. I also had a question, I don't know if it's broken down in the study and the appendices, this fee comparison study, but when you mentioned San Bernardino, I know you had mentioned in your talk here, Chino Hills, Ontario, is it all combined at an average fee, or does it actually break it down into comparatively between those neighboring cities?
We, from what I recall, we develop them for the individual cities and then aggregate them up. So if you, if there's an individual city you'd like to look at, or have a different one, so if you, for example, want to know what Chino Hills fees are, or just Ontario, we can break that out separately.
Okay, but, yeah.
The study has about five hundred pages of technical appendices, so we can get you those pages directly.
Okay. All right, that concludes my questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I actually, I thought of a question. Sorry. Again, thank you for coming out and making the trip out here. Going back to a couple of years ago during the recession, the county, I think, kind of initiated the effort, and then several cities followed to reduce the Tump. The rule of thumb, as I remember, is your reduction, the cities were responsible for making up the difference later on.
Yes.
In going through, and, you know, hypothetically speaking, adopting the nexus study, the fee gets implemented, it gets phased in, is there still that ability for individual cities to make that decision for their own jurisdiction, with the understanding that they would be responsible for the difference later on, if they chose not to adopt the full increase?
So our stance on that would be that anything that's done on a uniform basis, for example, freezing of heat, you may choose to, you may, for example, say the retail fee is phased in over a four-year. Our stance is that anything that's done formally across all of the regions is something we would address in a program. We've never had an instance where a city has adopted less than the full amount of fee, and we would have to figure out exactly even allow, and we say that's not compliant. But we would also say that you, as a city, always have the ability to not collect the full amount and make a particular project, if you choose to make up for that particular project. But you would have to find some way for maybe to pull out. So let's say you have a project, and you said, they owe a million dollars in Tump fees, we only want to, the city will pay half of that. What happens sometimes, at some stages here, is say, the project will pay its whole amount of Tump fees, but we'll, we'll work out a deal on our city gives. That happened very frequently, but we've never had a city to say, we're not going to adopt a full amount of Tump fee, and we have a city that you allow, we allow that, our preference would be any of those adjustments you made by, and you're forming. So as you're, sure, you deal with on a regular basis, the city, you do a nexus study, you can always adopt something less than a full amount. So my recommendation to you, always to avoid this, if you feel that it is too high for your label, or you feel that it's too high across the board, you have the ability, they have the ability to act on that, and direct us to set the fee to a certain level or their maximum, then we have to be correspond to you.
Okay. Good explanation. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Lorrimore.
Thank you, sir. One follow-up question, I'm sorry, it just came back to me. I had heard a rumor that Ontario might be joining WRCOG, or there were discussions about that, and?
No, the, I wish, and I've actually tried to recruit a couple of cities out of the bank that I've worked with before, but I believe what you're referring to is sandbags in action to dissolve the fuel program.
Ah, okay.
And they are also not looking for something called a CCA, Community Choice Agreement. Some of the cities in San Bernardino County have asked if they could join here a program which WRCO administers to our region, and so I don't believe that Ontario would join WRCO by the, I don't, it would be very interesting.
It would be.
Maybe pick a couple of Orange County cities.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to item four, our student liaison report.
Thank you. Okay. Claire Barn Elementary School's sixth grade promotion will be held this Friday, May 26th, and also they are very excited to announce that their current principal, Ms. Thompson, has been promoted to Administrative Director of Special Education, and the school will be announcing their new principal within the next few weeks. And River Heights Intermediate School recently celebrated the school being named a California Gold Ribbon School two weeks ago on Friday, May 12th, and they would like to thank all the community members and the city council members that came out to support and attend the event. And also, RHAS is excited to announce that they were one of the only two intermediate schools in the Cronin Norco Unified School District to be named a 2016 Honor Roll School. And also, their program JUMP, or Junior Upcoming Medical Professionals, won first place in the recent JUMP showdown competition. And next Friday on June 2nd, the eighth graders will be celebrating their promotion onto high school at the ERHS stadium. And currently, seventh grade leaders on campus and staff are preparing and planning for the upcoming 2017, 2018 school year. And next Friday on June 1st at 7:00 PM, Eleanor Roosevelt High School will be hosting the 12th grade graduation at the football stadium. And also, this Friday at 6:30 PM in the football stadium, they will be hosting the annual Powderpuff game, and doors open at 6:00 PM, and the game starts at 6:30, and tickets will be sold for five dollars. And a few weeks ago on May 5th, Eastvale Elementary hosted their first annual color run, and the local fire department was in attendance for the kickoff run. The school also had Kona Ice and Chick-fil-A for the participants. And with Eastvale Elementary being a year-round school, they have their first sixth grade promotion this Friday on May 26th, and the next promotion with the remaining tracks will be held on Thursday, June 22nd. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilman Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, more of a comment, but she briefly went over the Golden Ribbon Award that was given to two of the intermediate schools in Eastvale. It was also recently, last year, given to the high school. And that's not a little accomplishment, that's a, that's a great accomplishment, especially for our only high school in the city to get that, as well as our two intermediate schools in the city to get that. The reason it hasn't been given to our elementary schools is because it hasn't been, the application process hasn't gone forth yet. It'll be next year for our elementary schools, so we anticipate getting more of those. So, great job to our schools. I know Ted Rosse is here from the district, not for that, but great job from the district also, so it's a great accomplishment.
Mayor Pro Tem Lorrimore?
Um, not a question, more of a continuation of what we started down there. I wanted to thank you and congratulate you for completing a whole year with us. This young lady, she, she's very impressive. I, in fact, we were just chatting, I was asking her where she was going to be going to school next year, because she, I thought she was graduating in a week, she's that mature, I thought she was a senior. She's actually a junior, becoming a senior. She's actually a junior, becoming a senior this coming year. Um, but, you know, I've always been impressed with your updates, it's always been very thorough. And, uh, i- if you can't see her writing, uh, her writing up here. It, it, it's amazing, it's as if somebody took it and put it through a computer and printed it out. Um, but it's even gotten better, since, if that's even possible, since you first started, so, thank you very much for everything you've done. And we, you have to stay in touch, and we, I think all of us wish you, well, I know all of us, wish you the best of luck. And, uh, you have a very bright future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Anybody else? Alright, thanks again. We're gonna move, yeah.
Um, and I would just like to introduce, uh, oh, sorry, um, the new person that will be filling my position, which is Oscar Zuniga. And he'll be the student liaison for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year.
Alright, welcome, Oscar.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Oscar Zuniga. Um, I'm really excited to be, uh, be able to hold this position. Um, just as Natalie has informed you, I will be your new student representative. Um, I am also part of other leadership organizations, such as E S A, as council, and I'm also an executive board member. Um, just as I said, I'm really looking forward to be part of this council and provide you with valuable updates, just as well as handling it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, and welcome aboard, Oscar. Alright, we'll move on to item five, public comments. Uh, if you care to speak, please, uh, fill out one of the blue speaker cards. Take care, Natalie. Uh, just remember that if you speak on any item that is not on the agenda, we will not be able to take any action on it. Please keep your comments to two minutes. If you have any, uh, anything to say, uh, pro or con, please direct it at my colleagues, not at our staff. Thanks for getting that, yeah. So, do we have any, uh, speaker cards?
Yes, our first public comment card is from Ivan Cheng.
Good evening, I'm the mayor, esteemed council members and dedicated city servants. My name is, uh, Ivan Cheng, and this is my business partner, Shan Yang. We're here to voice out concerns about the shortage of senior housing and care facilities in Eastvale and surrounding regions for our rapidly aging baby boom population. The age, eighty-five plus population in the U.S. is growing at a much faster rate than the rest of the population. The rate at which American seniors are retiring is truly staggering. Ten thousand baby booms turn sixty-five each day. The number of Americans sixty-five and older was based on forty-seven point eight million in two thousand fifteen to seventy-nine point two million by two thousand thirty-five. The rapidly aging population is fueling demand for senior living facility that are in short supply, as demand continues to exceed supply. California is projected to be one of the fastest-growing states in the nation, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. The population of California is expected to cross forty million in two thousand seventeen. It is estimated the number of Californians between the age of one to nineteen years from the year two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-five will hover consistently around ten million population, while at the same time, the elderly population between the age of sixty to a hundred plus rose from approximately seven point five million in two thousand sixteen to ten million in two thousand twenty-five, equaling the number of young, one to nineteen years old. It told the California elderly population will grow more than twice as fast as the rest of the population. In the year two thousand twelve, the number of individuals fifty-five years older in Riverside County already comprised a quarter of the total population. And also in two thousand twelve, the largest popu- population category was between the age of forty-five to fifty-five, meaning that this large segment of people will become seniors in just a few years. I was introduced to the city of Eastvale by Ms. Shan Yang, who resides here in Eastvale. We both realized quickly that a senior community was left out of Eastvale's two thousand twelve general plan. Further plan is a need for housing seniors, as indicated from participating survey. Chapter eight of the Eastvale General Plan depicts desirable qualities for Eastvale to be a healthy community, which includes the community designed to serve the full lifecycle. Further policy B C eleven of the Eastvale General Plan, section eighty-nine states that the city encourages the development of residential centers for all segments of the residential population, for children, families, and senior citizens. We have experience in planning and developing a few senior communities, um, working on a current project in Kansas City, Missouri, as well as Moreno Valley, California. I'll also make a point that we're building homes and communities for elders, not institutional facilities. A particular type of senior care, uh, community and assisted living, memory care, skilled nursing facility that is steadily taking greater press in the U.S. is the Greenhouse Project, a concept where senior care homes consist of no more than twelve elders in a home with a central common area.
Thank you, Mr. Cheng. Can you share that with our, uh, planning director, please?
Yes, I can, dear.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is Justin Dewell.
Good evening, mayor, council. Um, Justin, with Assemblymember Servantis's office, just wanna provide a brief update from us. Um, not too much to update since, uh, last time on the legislative side. Um, this, later this week will be the deadline for, uh, bills and appropriations in the suspense file to be heard, um, and either, uh, struck down or moved forward by the appropriations committee. And we have, um, about seven bills in that committee, um, so we'll be, uh, waiting for that later this week. Um, the legislature is currently, uh, working on the May revision to the budget, um, and that must be passed by June fifteenth, um, by midnight. Um, other than that, um, we have a few events, district events, that our office is hosting. Um, we're having three senior scam stoppers throughout the district. Um, one is gonna be at the La Sierra Senior Center in Brookside on June twenty. Um, the other road, at the Rose and Eldridge Senior Center in Norco on June twenty-sixth. And, uh, the other at the Eddie Smith Senior Center in Garuba Valley on June thirtieth. Um, you can visit our website or give our office a call if you want more information, um, about those senior scam stopper events. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody? Twelve fifty? Thank you. Any other speaker?
Our last speaker for the evening is Joe Williams.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, Joe Williams, longtime resident of Eastvale. And recently, um, specifically on Monday, early morning, my daughter's car was analyzed, to the tune of five thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars' worth of damage. Um, my concern is when the deputy came out, he said he was the only one on duty. So I'm wondering if that is a true statement. Um, it took him over forty-five minutes to get to us. One of my neighbors had called nine-one-one and was giving a play-by-play as a young man took a baseball bat to my daughter's car. So, um, my neighbor was under the assumption that they were coming now, as he was talking to them on nine-one-one. Unfortunately, that did not happen. Two of my other neighbors, who are young gentlemen, uh, kinda were putting themselves in harm's way, and thank God, nothing happened to them. Unfortunately, no, no one got a picture of it, and I do have security cameras, but as you know, recently, it's been mostly theft on front doors or car break-ins that are on the driveway. So I have two cameras, one that faces the driveway, and one that faces my front door. Unfortunately, my daughter's car was parked on the side of my house. So I'm wondering, I have two calls into the deputy because I have other information to give them, and I can't get a call back. I'm wondering if it is true that there is only one deputy, how soon this is gonna be changing?
Thank you very much. Sorry to hear that.
Ma'am, I'm assuming you filed a report?
Yes.
Okay. Does our staff has your information? Does, does our staff have your content?
I don't believe so.
Okay, if you could give it to them, our chief of police is here, and he can follow up with you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Is your finger okay?
This was surgery.
Oh, okay.
Last speaker. We'll go ahead and move on to, uh, item six, the consent calendar. Uh, has anybody asked for anything to be pulled?
No, we have not.
Alright, I entertain a motion.
Let's move.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Laramore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
At the request of Councilmember, uh, Rigby, uh, we're gonna move on to item eight point one, prior to doing seven point one.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Um, as eight point one is to appoint a, uh, or regarding the Public Safety Commission appointment, I recently went through the application process with that. Um, one of the things that I'm very impressed with, with our, with our community is the desire for people to serve, as well as the qualifications of, of our community. Um, it, it was a great opportunity for me, me to be able to go through and interview and to see, uh, the people's qualifications and desire. We have some people that are very concerned about our public safety, so it was a great opportunity for me, um, as well as a harder, a hard, uh, position for me. But going through the interview process, I was able to, uh, I interviewed, and the person that I would like to, uh, not, um, the person that I would like to make a motion to appoint to this position is a resident that has, um, extensive leadership, uh, experience, as well as law enforcement experience, and I, I feel that he will do a great job, which is, uh, Mr. Joe Ward. So I, I motioned for Mr. Joe Ward to be, uh, appointed to the Public Safety Commission.
Second, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, technically speaking, the council member doesn't need approval of the rest of the council. All they need to do is confirm his appointment, so each council member has the right to appoint your commissioner, you made that appointment, and the, and the council just confirms it, uh, through a consensus, and then we'll go through with the, um, the administration of the office.
I'm always learning, so this is my first time, so thank you.
We're putting the icing on the cake.
We're making sure it's for sure.
Yes.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. I state to you, I will do solemnly swear to support and defend, um, for the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, from all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of invasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to. Congratulations.
Alright, welcome aboard. We'll go ahead and move on to item seven, our public hearing. Seven point one is a continued, uh, public hearing from May tenth. Uh, and at the time of the meeting, our public hearing, the public comment portion was closed. The council directed staff to research additional information on the project, and at this time, we will continue public hearings, so, item seven-one, uh, Mr. Norris.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, so we have the original presentation, but I don't plan to give that unless we need to go back to any of those slides. So what we would like to do is focus on that additional information that the council requested. And, and I think, uh, Joe Endrawan from Public Works actually collected all this for us. So there were a couple of things that I, that, uh, we heard you wanted to learn more about. One was a little bit more about the STEM Academy, and how it was gonna operate, it, its enrollment and so on. And then, uh, information on school capacity and enrollment, and how the, the approval of the Van Lewen Project might affect that. So let's dive into the slides here. So about the STEM Academy, uh, and some of this was kind of new to us. Uh, one thing that we learned was that there already are, and mayor, you and some other council members may know this, there already are STEM Academy students at the high school. Of four hundred and forty-three hundred students there, two hundred and seventy are already in the STEM Academy. So it's not entirely new students. So when, when the STEM Academy gets built, enrollment will go up, and that's a second bullet there. By two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, enrollment in the high school goes up. But even with all the STEM students, 'cause they count those all as one total, it goes up about ten percent from what it is now. So it's not as though eight or nine hundred new students were gonna be coming from somewhere else, in addition to the forty-three hundred who are already there at the high school. So it goes up, but the STEM Academy is already kind of in that mix. The other thing that, that we learned was that the STEM Academy, and this kind of gets at the traffic issue, starts earlier in the morning. There on what's called a zero period, which starts at six-thirty-eight in the morning, and ends an hour earlier in the afternoon than, than the rest of the high school. The rest of the school starts at period one, which starts at seven forty in the morning. So if you're looking at people like other students, parents potentially coming and dropping their kids off, they're gonna be doing those at a different time of day. So when the STEM Academy is up and running, first of all, it's not a whole bunch of new kids, but it also takes those kids and shifts their arrival an hour earlier. So that could kind of help smooth out the traffic flow, 'cause it's not all happening there at the same crunch time as everything else. The other thing we looked at was school enrollment. So in our chart here, we put Eastville Elementary School at the top, because that's a school closest to the Van Lewen site, and the one where these kids would prob, would most likely go. The second line there is the new Rondo Elementary, which isn't open yet, but we're projecting that, that that will be open. So these numbers came to us from the school district, and we're looking at projected enrollment for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, or the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, and then looking a few years ahead to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. The numbers on the right-hand side, some of those, you'll see asterisks down at the bottom, uh, for Parks, Clara Barton, and Reagan. Those are numbers that assume that Rondo is open. If for some reason the Rondo school doesn't open, those numbers will be higher. But what you're looking at here is, for instance, Eastville Elementary, they're actually projecting a slight decrease in enrollment over that time period. And I think it was mentioned at the last council meeting that that's just natural. School populations kind of go up and down as people, you know, households age and so on. But, uh, in general, what you're seeing is a, a decline in the enrollment at all the schools, because Rondo comes online. And those additional students are shifted over to the new school. So we also wanted to look just for a second at the student generation rates, just to give you an idea of the effect of the Van Lewen Project on school enrollment. So these numbers come out of the, the district's most recent two thousand sixteen, uh, fee study, where they go through and they estimate how many students are coming out of each household. And they break it down into elementary, junior high school, and high school. So a little less than a quarter of an elementary student, on average, comes out of each household. A little less than a tenth of a junior high school student, and, uh, you know, fifteen percent of a high school student. So, and those are based on single-family attached homes. If you're talking about detached homes, they're a little bit different, but because of density that we're looking at for the Van Lewen Project is probably more of an attached product, we use these numbers here, they're only slightly different for, for detached. So if we apply those numbers to the Van Lewen Project, and we look at the maximum number of homes that could get built under the approval, I'm sorry, uh, uh, under the proposal, rather, you're looking at twenty-eight elementary students, nine high, nine junior high school students, and nineteen. So looking in simple, directly at Eastville Elementary, that's about two percent of the projected students at the Eastville Elementary School. And if we look only at the increase, so compared to what he currently has general planned to what is being proposed, that increases it by forty-seven homes, and that now brings it down to, that, that increment, the delta, is eleven elementary school students. So that's about one percent of the enrollment at Eastville Elementary, which, as we mentioned, is already going down over time with the, with Rondo coming online. So I hope that answers your questions. Uh, as I said, we have the original presentation, if you'd like to go through any of those slides. And just to, to recap, what, what's being proposed, and what your... And just to recap, what, what's being proposed and what your planning commission recommended is to increase the density on, on Mr. Van Lewin's property from a maximum of five units per acre up to eight units per acre. And he's also asking for a zone change to R three to correspond with that new general plan category. So with that, I'll just be ready to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rush?
Thank you. Can you go back to the projected, yeah, yeah, nope. One more. That's it. I'm curious how we get twenty-eight students from a hundred and twenty-six homes. Can you explain that methodology?
Yeah, if it's about point two-three students per home, you multiply that by a hundred and twenty-six and you get twenty-eight.
And where is that point two-three students per home coming from?
That comes from the school district. That was their fee study when they went out and determined, when they set their school fees. And they looked at number of households, number of students, and came up with an average number of students per household.
So is that just in generation of fees or is it actual numbers? That just seems very low to me.
That's the number of students. Yeah, we called this, the school district this afternoon to confirm those numbers. And those are pretty standard from what I've seen in other districts across the state. It's usually about a fourth of an elementary school student per household on average.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have right now.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, you know, on Adam's point, he, he does raise a good one, but I also found it interesting in looking at student generation rates. In the past, I've seen that the smaller a place, like for instance, multifamily homes, it produces more children, likelihood. Anyway, that's a side note, but the question is, um, for overall population of the high school, for instance, because that's gonna be right there. Do we have numbers as to how many of these students of, at, looking over the attachment one? How many of these students are Eastville residents versus, in district versus intra-district transfer? And is there, do you have an answer to that?
You know, I think the best person to answer that is Ted Rozzi from the school district. He's here, so you might want to direct that question to him.
Okay, so we will ask that question, sir. And the other part of that is, well, a follow-up to that question is, do we have preference for Eastville residents to go to these schools? Would you mind answering, sir?
Thank you, councilmember. So as regard to the first point, I don't have the exact percentages on the number of students at those high schools versus Eastville. Because of the existing-
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry, just we record the, the meeting, sorry.
Absolutely. Because of the existing capacity challenges of Roosevelt, we're very sensitive to not allowing any inter and or intradistrict transfers more than we would at other high schools. Obviously, we have preference to Corona schools, who might be at Morco or Corona or Centennial. For whatever reason, they're requesting Roosevelt, they may have parent employment issues, after year, or after school schedule, whatever. So we try to accommodate those as much as possible, as we have Roosevelt students who go to other school district schools. But with regards to inter-district transfer, those could be done without the district, beyond the district, I should say. Most of those are directed to other high schools in the district because they continue to have that capacity. And then your second question, what's on your mind?
The, the second question is, is a preference given, i- if, for instance, you meet, I don't know if you're gonna be meeting capacity within the next six years, five years here, but if it was, would Eastville residents get preference?
For the STEM program specifically?
For the STEM?
Both. So I would have to give you our, our specific, because I don't have that memorized. That typically goes between our construction support division and the school. But obviously, the whole genesis of the STEM Academy was to meet this capacity demands of Eastville. So that's the intent of the program, as stated earlier. If you expect it up there in the regular program of STEM program, there's still Roosevelt high school kids. We're looking at capacity, or what we projected to be the maximum Roosevelt high school number approximately, maybe just a shit of five thousand. So as the projection shows, we're stock capacity, as we expect going forward. I would suggest that we do give preference to Eastville students. And we'll only offer those spots if we determine there was some number available. The STEM Academy was built for Eastville students, Eastville.
Alright, thank, thank you, sir.
Councilman Rigby?
I have a couple of questions. On the, um, this slide here, that's district-wide, correct, and not specific to Eastville area?
Correct. As was stated earlier, which is what Councilmember Lorimer said. In some communities, higher density housing tends to have higher gen, or higher generation rates. However, in Eastville, we're funding Corona, the most recently high-density projects. Because of the type of housing that's being constructed, we're getting very low generation rates from some of the higher-density projects. Because they're a very nice project, they're very, uh, they're geared toward a different type of parent and or individual. And so whether they're in Corona, they have some projects built on North Main Street or down in those spots, their generation rates are extremely low. And so for just for average, we have only those experiences from which we are.
In, in our packet, we were given the enrollment projections for Eastville schools all the way through twenty twenty-three. Do you know on those projections, and I'm sure it's probably a shot in the dark right now, but do you know where we're at on max capacity on those specific schools? Specifically, the schools in the, in the, uh, next to the high school there?
For Eastville Elementary, uh, he would put, you have that slide in there? So for Eastville Elementary, he would suggest our capacity is approximately about twelve hundred at any one time. Remember, this school is on a year-round calendar. So approximately three-quarters of the students intended at any one time. But a one-time capacity, Eastville Elementary is approximately twelve hundred students. For the intermediate school, which is pictured there, remember, it was at about sixteen, seventeen hundred before the Ramares were built. So we would suggest a one-time capacity is about thirteen hundred. For the high school, again, the capacity is gonna be just shit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted, for coming out for us. We appreciate it, as always. What is the status of Rio Honda? Opening? New school?
Rondo Elementary.
Rondo? Did I say Rio Honda? That's a river, huh? It's next to a river, so.
Currently, um, we have completed all our department of toxic substances control processes. We have begun and end our, I think, nearly completed, not complete, with our C plus process. We're just finalizing some additional details. I expect to close July, beginning construction phase one in August. I think the board will consider the groundbreaking date probably September.
This year?
Correct. And with every intention of opening in summer of twenty nineteen.
Sounds good.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rozzi. I have a question for Eric. The homes that were just built that are split by splicing, that, that were built across from the Eastville Elementary?
Mm-hmm.
What's the zoning on those?
Uh, the D.R. Horton?
Yes.
That's the same density category as proposed here.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, not school-related. Hundred and twenty-six homes, did we even do any type of like population projection for that based upon the density?
No, we didn't, but our, our household size is what, Michelle, about three-point-five, three-point-six, something like that? So a little over three, so roughly, what, you know, four hundred people, more or less?
Okay. Thank you.
And that's also something that could actually, senior housing could go in there.
Senior housing could go in there, in which case the school generation goes way down and
Zero.
and the over, overall population goes down as well, probably.
Must be an adult school.
Thank you. Councilman Plot?
Yeah, I have one question. My iPad's going nuts here. Can you give me the propos, on the prior proposal, that was supposed to be high-density? How many homes were intended to go in on, on that projection according to now to, to medium-high density, which is one-twenty-six?
Get that for you.
I know it's in, I know it's in there, but I just, I'm having a hard time loading this thing up.
No, that's totally okay. I'll come fix your iPad after the meeting. They can currently do seventy-nine. The proposal now is a hundred and twenty-six and the earlier proposal was two hundred and twenty-one.
Thank you.
I have another question for Eric. Is, is it uncommon for a builder to, well, obviously you want to maximize, but is that, so that would be if they, if they did the maximum number of possible units, they could do the one twenty-nine? Or what?
Hundred and twenty-six.
Hundred and twenty-six.
Be the most they could build.
Right, and that's taking into account, um, open space? Or is that just the formula for the amount of acreage that's there?
That's just units times acres, yeah.
Okay, so, so it's much more likely that there would actually, even if the builder maximized it, there would be less than a hundred and twenty-six units there?
You know, we've tended to see things coming in more toward the upper end of the range here when they get built. I think in general, you know, certainly our single-family neighborhoods are built pretty much at five per acre, which is a high end of that range. So, uh, there's some topography to deal with on this site. But again, given that he's probably gonna build a smaller or attached kind of product, it might be easier to deal with those issues than it would be if it were single-family homes. So I'd say it's reasonable to assume that they'd be, get, get pretty close to eight per acre.
Yeah, just from my perspective, I mean, state law requires about ten percent of your site to be dedicated for water quality and BNP's, so you take that out. You take about ten, fifteen percent out of the site for roads, so you, you know, from a developer's perspective, you want to get at least the midpoint, probably about twenty, thirty percent higher than that. So you're, you're never gonna get the maximum, because you gotta put in all the, the stuff to service the project. But usually developing about seventy percent of the site at the most.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Anybody else? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, sir. We're, we're being asked to approve at two different levels, so going back to that. Has there been any discussion of the type of project that would go into this location, any developments on that front?
Not that I know of. You might want to ask the, the property owner, he's here tonight. I believe he said in previous meetings here and at the planning commission that he doesn't have any active proposals. They're not planning to move anytime soon, so, but you, you could ask him.
Okay, as a follow-up, um, in that we are not dealing with a specific project, would we be able, well, would the project, it would be mitigated? Yes?
Yeah, once a development project comes in, as you know, I think we have a pretty rigorous process for, for vetting those and making sure that they meet our standards. That project will be subject to its own environmental analysis, so we'll get a more detailed traffic analysis. We'll do all the bugs, bunnies, bones stuff at, at that point, once we know it's getting built. So yes, we'll definitely take a very careful look at that specific development project and mitigate its impact.
So theoretically, that would likely include a road widening there?
Oh, yes, they'll be required to widen all the frontages. Uh, as Councilman Rush mentioned, there's all the other requirements that they'll have to do. All the internal roadways, all that kind of stuff is gonna be required of them.
And do we have, by approving it this way, because this is irregular as compared to how we usually do this, would we still be able to work with whatever developer comes in to have these different mitigation measures put in?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Talk to any developer who's been through here and you'll tell them that we spend a lot of time working with them on the projects.
Thank you.
Councilman Plot?
What were the egress-ingress areas of the, of the, if we were to develop, what would be the egress-ingress areas?
Probably two, probably one on Scholar Way, south of Citrus. And the other on Citrus, probably closer down to the eastern end of the project to get it as far away from the signal at Scholar.
So closer to the, the park?
Closer to the park, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just as more of an additional clarification that Mayor Protem Lorimer, what you're doing tonight is that you are considering just entitlements on raw property. You're, you're giving consideration for what the general plan land use designation is and what the zoning. When a project does come in, that'll be coming back to the city and all the planning, um, approvals, all the planning mitigation will be a separate issue that goes back to the planning commission. And they're gonna hash everything that you, you have raised questions of. So think of it as another project to a project. Only it's gonna be more detailed. So it, it doesn't give the, the applicant or the property owner, the property owner, any, any definitive land use, um, project. It just gives that person a land use entitlement. And this used to happen actually quite a bit before, in the eighties and nineties, where financing was difficult and property owners or developers would buy land and get entitlements and wait a while to develop them when, when prices were right.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Councilman Plot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one other question, and this may, Honorable Michelle, this may be for, for either one of you. What requirements, since we don't know what's potentially gonna be developed, but let's say it is senior housing or it is something within this extent of a, of a medium-high density, are there any requirements that are, we're fulfilling by doing that as far as having certain density requirements or something of that, to that extent?
Um, Councilmember Plot, I'm actually gonna defer that question to Eric, because the, he's more familiar with our RENA numbers.
Yeah, and, and to answer that question, the housing element numbers that we have, the RENA numbers, only look at income levels. They don't look at senior housing. So we don't have a requirement to build senior housing. And as a proxy for price, we use density. And this density category is one that we're actually already pretty well supplied in. It's the very highest category, twenty-two acres, twenty-two units per acre and above that we're really looking for more units to be able to build. So this is, is good in the sense that it is a diversifying the housing stock. That we're now, you know, having some units that aren't all of this, you know, the typical single-family, but it, it doesn't really help us in terms of our housing element.
Thank you. The most difficult projects to build inside are the ones they want you to build.
Eric, for the benefit of the public, can you kind of explain a little bit the, the RENA requirements?
Yeah, delve into that really quickly. RENA is R-H-N-A, it's the Regional Housing Needs Analysis or Allocation, I'm sorry. That comes to us, it's a long process. It starts up at the state, comes down to the sub-regional government, which in this case is SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, and then down to WRCOG. All the cities are involved in that. We weren't for the last RENA process, because we weren't a city, but, so we, we got an allocation, every city in the state does. And what the state is trying to do is more or less even out the income distribution in every city in California. So if you're a very rich city, the state is basically saying you need to provide the opportunity for people of lower incomes to live in your community. And they do that by saying you need to have more high-density housing, because it's typically less expensive. So if you're a very poor city, you may still get an allocation of high-density housing, but it's less than you would if you were a very rich city. So that comes from, straight from Sacramento, and that's their attempt to make every city more similar. Or at least to make it possible for, you know, the school teacher to live in the community where they teach, for instance. So that, that's kind of that whole process. We're, we're about two or three years or so into the current housing element cycle. The next numbers are gonna come out in about five years. So, you know, we have numbers, we have a housing element which was certified by the state that has programs which will help us fulfill our obligations. And at the end of eight years, we'll get new numbers, every city will, even built-out cities. If you're entirely built-out, you get new numbers from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Any other questions? Any council discussion? Is there any?
Comment was closed, wasn't it?
It's closed. I'll entertain a motion.
I have a comment first, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of concerns that I have with this. I think one is, is we're looking at a project that we don't know what- I think one is, is we're looking at a project that we don't know what the project is going to be. We're looking at something to approve that I don't really see the benefit to the city, to the residents right now. It's kind of just approving a project, going through the, the school issue. We're at 1198 at the elementary school right there. Yeah, we're only adding 30, but that puts us over our, our, our number that we're supposed to be at. We have the largest park in the city down there that's already a traffic issue. We're proposing to make a larger park there, as well as we're proposing now to increase density, which is going to increase traffic. Not to say that the increase in the zone change isn't appropriate for that project, but I just don't know if the timing is right right now without having a project in place, without having a developer coming with possibly the property owner and saying, this is what we propose, this is how it's going to benefit the city, this is what we're going to do. So that's, that's my concern right now.
Yeah, I, I would, I would concur with that. I've thought long and hard about this project, and I think the confluence of everything going on in that particular area of town is, is already problematic. Not, not putting anything against the project of the density itself, but I think the location that it's being proposed in is, is not quite the best fit, especially with all the traffic issues that are going on. It may be a incremental increase, but I think we're already at the threshold within this area, you know, in combination of Silver Lakes. Dicky, I'm sorry, do you have something to tell us?
I, I put in a speaker request, yes, I do.
Okay, we can discuss that.
As a representative of J C S D, I thought I could speak tonight.
Okay, can I finish my statement?
Okay.
Thanks, appreciate it. Just the confluence of everything in that particular area is already problematic and, and adding, albeit, you know, based upon the data, an incremental amount. I think, you know, also the, the schools are already, there, there's the data issue and there's the perception issue. And, and the perception issue is what we, you know, I think all of us get hounded on, on a, on a daily basis, I do, with, with the complaints of, of schools, and we have the, the fortunate or unfortunate aspect of having, I think, one of the best school districts in the nation, and I credit Mr. Newberry and, and everyone down the line on that. People flock to this area for our schools, and all the things that we're hearing wrong about California, I'm not going to move because I want to keep my kids in the school district. And, and my wife's a teacher in another district, you know, that they could go to, but we live here partly because of the schools, so I think that's the huge draw. Adding additional impact to those current and future students, I think, is going to be a problem. So that's my comments.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Thank you. You know, I, I don't think that the position that the applicant finds themselves in is fair. I think that they did everything in their power to get this done prior to us becoming a city, getting it done with the county, and through no fault of their own, the change of density, which I don't know if I, I would have agreed to personally, but the change of density, they did it. It was approved, and we adopted everything else that was done by the county. And this was before my time on the council even, but I, I don't think it's fair. The part that I have difficulty with is the bringing into conformity the general plan and the zoning. But I understand that we run into legal difficulty if we don't do that. However, I also understand that we do have areas of the city that we didn't make it this way, but that are out of conformity, but not through fault of our own. So anyway, it is circular, but generally, I, I am in favor of making it right, where, you know, they've already done this. We should, at bare minimum, get them to the place that they're already, that they already thought they were at, but that's my, those are my comments.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at a, a change from a maximum of five to a maximum of eight. Is that correct? So it is, as Councilman Rush said, it's incremental. We're talking about a project, should it come, it would be years down the road, when those improvements are going to be needed. They'll be done, and I, I think that the nominal amount or increase in the unit level is negligible. I don't think it's going to have, I, I know we, it's almost like being alarmist, and we need to be, but I, I truly don't feel that the, the worries we have about that incremental, that, that increase will have any of the impact that we're speculating about at this point. So I'm prepared to support the project, the change, the applicant's request. Councilman Rigby, you have something?
Yeah, just off of, I understand that this was a project that went before the county before. So be it unfortunately whatever happened there, unfortunate circumstances, totally understand that. As city council members though, I feel that we have been voted in by our constituents to do what is best for the city. Not necessarily to correct something that we felt was, should have been done or something. I mean, I, I don't know, I think we've been voted in and our, our constituents trust that we're going to make the best decision that's for the city. I think, yes, it happened before, but they're two totally different things, two totally different, they're, they're, they're related, but they're not related. Because we're here to make the decision that's best for the city, so.
I think we have a public comment, Mayor, and also if you, I'd like to ask our city attorney a question on one of the points I made about the churning up the zoning and the density. Could you talk about that?
Yes, Mayor Protem Lorimer, what it is, state law, what they look at, they require that there be what is known as horizontal and vertical consistency with your land use. And that's mandated by state law in the sense that you have to have your general plan consistent with your, with your zoning on a piece of property, so that if they're inconsistent, it basically says that you're, you're approving a general plan that is inconsistent with your zoning, and that creates a problem as far as legality under state law. So the, the Planning and Zoning Act under state, under state law says you have to have consistency with both of them in order for there be a, a legal requirement. So when we do a general plan amendment, we have to make the zoning consistent with the general plan, which creates a, a larger threshold, if you will, of, of density. And that zoning then gets that threshold and creates the density with it, within that threshold. So it's like a wider view and then it gets narrow. And then when you have a project, as Eric says, then a project defines it even more. That's how the law requires planning and zoning with respect to these type of projects. If they are out of sync, and we've had issues like that, and we still do have some properties within the city that are not consistent, we, we brought that, we have those discussions in-house, and we got to clean those up. What we tend to do is we wait till there's a project coming in or there's a more comprehensive plan, and then we, we shore up that to make sure it's consistent before a project says in. Now granted, with that said, that is the legal requirement. If there is an inconsistency in it and we know it and we're going to try to change it, sometimes that is, that, that is the only course of action, as long as we move in that direction. But to leave it the way they, it is, legally it's not, it's not acceptable under law.
Okay, as a follow-up then, because you, you had stated that in your explanation here, that as long as there is, that we change it when there is a project, the inconsistencies that are.
Right.
And are you saying that we aren't able to do that with this project?
No, no, what I'm saying is that you're doing it now and laying, laying the groundwork now for a project to come in that will meet the requirements of the consistency of the general plan and the zoning. So when the project comes in, they won't have to make that change because it's already been done. Sometimes what happens is that a project comes in concurrently with a, with a general plan amendment and a zone change, and it's all done at once. Here, you're taking step one first and then the project comes in. But again, that project also has to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning. It's just another step that's taking a longer period of time to do it. So if you look at it, it, it all follows that it's a consistent project from the general plan to the actual project itself. So you're laying the groundwork for a legal project at some point in time.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I recommend that we let Mr. Simmons speak, if it's okay, everyone. I didn't mean to cut you off, it's just really hard to talk over. This room echoes. We, we appreciate the school district's generosity. He's not listening. Letting you use the room, but the, the room echoes so bad, it's hard to talk over, so I apologize for cutting you off.
And if I don't have any objections, I would like to invite the speaker up to the podium. Mr. Simmons?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize that microphone was right there between us two.
I don't even think it's a microphone. We can hear people talking in the back when they're whispering. It's because if I'm the prin- if I'm the principal and I'm talking, the students can hear them back. That's the way that they make the room, I think.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Council, I just, I'm in favor of approving this project because I just can't, it's inconceivable for me to see that this government agency can unwind this deal that was mismanaged back when we became a city, that it wasn't recorded properly and wasn't given the entitlements to this, this acreage. And on the other thing, the first speakers tonight, and then public comment, I'm in favor of senior housing. And I'd also like to have the opportunity for this community to recognize that we have kids that are now grown up and going out on their own, but they can't live near their parents. They have to go somewhere, like my daughter just moved to Yucatán, Yucatán, that's 40 miles away. And with my two, my grandkids, we don't have an opportunity for our kids to have some smaller units here in Eastville to, to live in. Horrible. And I just believe that we should do the right thing and grant this entitlement to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. I had one other question. The, the second phase of the park, is that something that would be able to move forward if this were approved tonight?
Mayor Tesari, based upon my discussions with J C S D, with regards to Phase Two of Eastville Community Park, this is, the approval of this project is contingent upon the granting of an easement to J C S D to actually build the park. So if this project is not approved, then the park will not be moving forward.
It's good information to have.
And why is that? Is that just an agreement between the, the owner and J C S D then?
Well, and I will, I'm going to give you the information that I know, but I would also like to allow Mr. Van Loon an opportunity to speak to that if I, if I miss any of the details. But it's my understanding that the purchase agreement from J C S D to the Van Loons included the granting of an easement from Scholar Way, the continuation of Scholar Way down to what would be Eastville Community Park Phase Two. The purchase agreement for the property included language that stated that the property owner, the Van Loons, would grant the easement to J C S D upon vacation of their primary residence. They do not wish to leave Eastville at this time, but J C S D would like to build their park now. So you have, you have a problem. J C S D doesn't wish to pay for the easement because it was part of the purchase agreement, yet Mr. Van Loon, rightfully so, does not wish to grant an easement for free or give up part of his, I guess, his front yard, his personal property to accommodate construction of a park that is not within the scope of their purchase agreement, which was to grant the easement as part of the purchase upon vacation of his primary residence. So we are at a bit of an impasse, and during this entire process of Eastville Community Park coming to Eastville City Hall to discuss, you know, traffic studies, et cetera, et cetera, city staff kept pointing out to J C S D, you do not have an easement. You don't have a road. You don't have a means of putting through a road based on the recorded maps. And so that kind of came out after, and again, you have city engineer Joe Endowan here that can enlighten you further on those details, but it was at that point that J C S D realized that they too had a problem because they're building a park ahead of schedule according to the agreement with the Van Loons.
Thank you. Councilman Plot?
Well, before we, I actually had a question for the, the remaining councilmen as well, and including yourself, Mayor. If this isn't appropriate, if, again, if you are, you feel it's appropriate, then you don't have to answer. But if it isn't appropriate, and obviously it'd be up to the landlord to sell how, and to sell which density, but what would go there that would make sense then? What are we envisioning that would make sense in that area? Because it can't just remain the way it is, so what would make sense? I think I just want, I'd like to, not for the sake of just argument or debate, is, I would like to hear those answers.
Well, I'll comment on it. Like we just said, right now, all we would be changing in, if the unit level were staying the same, okay, Eric's leaving, so I, I'll just.
Well, can I, let me, let me.
We're looking at five units maximum.
I, I get we're looking at now, but if, if, if.
So that's what would be envisioned?
No, I get it, but if Councilman Rush and, I'm asking, it's more specific for Councilman Rush than Councilman Rigby. If, if medium-high density isn't what, if, if it's too much, then what is, what, what is it that they're looking at that they would like to see there, which, for my knowledge, it would just help to understand.
Yeah, so if I may, Mr. Mayor, as I, as I said earlier, I'm not completely opposed to the increase of density. The part that I don't agree with right now is I think the cart's before the horse. I think we're doing this right now premature, and I think that we're doing it with the hope of a developer coming in and sticking with this zoning. It's a lot easier to go a step increase rather than a two-step increase. Right now, we're doing a step increase. A developer comes in and a developer can say, you know what, we're at five to eight now, or we're, we're at medium-high now, and now the developer can come say, well, let's go one step up, let's go to high density. So that's why I think that if we had a project in place, I'm not saying that we wouldn't approve it. I just don't think that we're, we're doing a benefit to the city or the residents of the city by just improve, by just approving land just because, just because an applicant came to us and said, hey, I want to do this. And we're, we're telling our residents now that we okayed, if we approve this, that we okayed this increase in traffic, this increase in the schools, and why did we do it? I don't know.
The city manager?
Mayor Tesari, just to, to kind of recap, one component of this, this is very important for, for, I guess, the benefit of the public as well as the council. This was approved by the county. It was approved by the county approximately 10 days before the city incorporated. The county failed, for whatever reason, to record their approval of this general plan amendment on the maps that were. uh, on the maps that, uh, were delivered to us upon incorporation. And this was unbeknownst to us because how, you know, we're a newly incorporated city. How would we have known that there was, there was a recording that-
I'm sorry, if I could kind of amend that, I don't think it was a failure, not that the county doesn't fail in many things many times, but, um, typically it takes about six months to update the maps. Um, I'm working on a project right now where there was an amendment in December of 2015. The maps just got updated. So, and just procedurally, and I'm not saying it's anybody's fault but the county's, the resolution was adopted, I think the resolution was adopted even close to that, like on September thirtieth. The resolution then gets packaged up by a planner, whoever the planner is, and I think it was Larry Ross at the time, um, gets shipped over to R C I T, who runs the G I S program, and they have it in a stack. And they get to it when they get to it. And they have to go through in the meets and bounds description and plug in each one of those numbers and update the shape files in the county, and then it gets uploaded. So it's likely it got caught in that transition timeframe of about six months as we were going through the flurry of incorporation. And I'm sure Larry probably just packaged everything up that we had, because he did this with Menifee, brought it in a box, I remember we had boxes and we had Mylars, we had a whole bunch of stuff. Um, so it, it takes a while to get updated, very long, and why that is, government, I don't know.
Thank you very much for the clarification, Councilmember Rush, and my apologies. Failure was not the, there was no negative implementation. Well, not, not even that, I meant no disrespect to the county, the, the point is, it didn't take place. And we incorporated, and the maps were delivered, and that, those are the documents that we have been working off of this entire time. Um, that's what we've planned the entire community around, is, is the documents that we adopted from the county. And because of not having our V L F money and having it stripped away, we never went through our own full-blown general plan amendment and adopted our own land use and, you know, uh, made the general plan and the zoning code coincide. This is typically what, what most cities, cities do, and I believe Eurippa Valley is going through this right now. But at the time, um, I was a planning commissioner, actually, and it was almost two million dollars to do a general plan.
And we had the consultant, because we canceled it immediately, that was one of the first things we canceled.
Correct.
And, and they were here almost in tears, standing, begging us to keep it going, and, and we just couldn't. Because it was about one point seven, one point eight million dollars to do the whole thing.
Absolutely, I, I was the planning commissioner that was, that got to sit through all the R F Ps and-
We had selected the consultant, but we hadn't signed the contract, thank goodness.
Yes. So we, we had to cancel that process once we lost our V L F money, because it was one point seven million dollars we didn't have. Um, and we did what I would refer to as a quick and dirty general plan to, uh, meet the requirement by the state, which is that you have to have adopted your own general plan um, at a certain time after incorporation. So we did, you know, as I said, we did it in-house, we did, and no disrespect to Adam, Eric, I, I don't mean quick and dirty as in sloppy, I just mean it was quick and dirty that we, we got it done to meet the requirements of the state. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, sir?
It was an excellent job.
Yes, it was an excellent job. Um, but we didn't clean anything up. We left it as is, which included the maps that were provided to us, zoning and general plan maps that were provided to us from the county. Fast forward several years, now we have the Eastville Community Park coming through, and this situation comes to full light. How do we reconcile it? You have a property owner that had something that was given to them that they feel was lost in the incorporation process. You have a park that wants to start construction, but is not really in agreement with the terms of the purchase agreement that was extended to the property owners. So we, we actually have a couple of different issues here that are mutually exclusive.
I have, I have two additional comments, now that the, the J C S D issue has kind of been let out of the bag and, and thank you for that, I think. You know, I was trying to focus on, on the issues at hand, but I, I personally think it's, it's inappropriate, highly inappropriate, that this project and this, and this decision that we're being asked to make is, is being thrown in the mix there. Um, and, and no disrespect to Mr. Simmons, it was before his time, but I think it was very bad negotiating on the part of the district. Um, I think it was great negotiating on Bill's part, indeed. You know, the, you got kind of your cake and, and got to eat it too, um, and, and great for you, I think, you know. God bless you guys, stay there as, as long as you want. Um, that's absolutely your right, you know, but that, this decision of a density change as being intermingled as, as what I'll, I'll kind of just call as a quid pro quo for that easement, I think is very troubling and very inappropriate. Um, it, it, it kind of goes back to some of the, the core issues between our relationship, you know, of our relationship between the city and the district, and I don't want to, you know, open up that can of worms at this point, but we need to look at these things as mutually exclusive, and, you know. I, my heart goes out to you guys, I mean, I, I love Bill, he's, he's a friend, um, I've known him for years, you know, but we have to look at things in, in the context, non-emotionally, real estate, you know, Councilmember Rigby knows this, real estate cannot get emotional. Um, it cannot get, you know, personal, um, because there, there are decisions that have to be made that affect the environment and affect, you know, residents' lives, and so that's how I'm looking at it. To address Councilman Plot's decision, I think if this were to come back with a full development package, that would be better. Um, my concern is still, like I mentioned, the, the confluence of so many things going on in this particular area of the city, um, you know, and it being troubling. And I think that incremental effect is, in my opinion, putting it over the threshold with respect to those environmental impacts. And I'm, I'm not, you know, integrating any of the, the easement issues in, into this, you know, opinion. It's the traffic, the schools, the residents, the, the integration, the, the, you know, pictures I get of, of friends of mine sitting, trying to get out of Eastville Community Park, you know, at nine o'clock at night after twenty minutes. Um, at Silver Lakes, I was at, uh, Jersey Mike's on Saturday for an hour and a half. I sat in line for thirty-eight minutes, because my six-year-old wanted a sandwich and tried to be a good dad, so I sat in line because their place was packed with soccer kids. And it took us an hour and a half to get lunch. So it, it has great advantages, it's also coming with a lot of disadvantages, and, you know, to, to plop another development, if we had a site plan and a track map and, uh, a, a traffic, you know, an updated traffic study that showed the ingress and egress, shows the geometrics, I think that would be much better. And I understand why that's not happening at this point, I've done a lot of these, you know, speculative general plan amendments, but would it be better? Yes, would it sway me in, fully in that direction? I don't know, we'd have to look at it, so. I'll shut up at this point.
Thank you, Councilman Rush, I just, I agree with Councilman Rush, that shouldn't be one of the considerations. And it's not for me. I sup, I support the, uh, change simply because it's conforming. It's conforming to the surrounding neighborhood. In, in, uh, response to the incrementalism, I know that is a concern, but what's the next increment? Fourteen units, right? That would be not conforming with the neighborhood. So I, I support it simply on those grounds, it's conforming to the neighborhood. When a project does come forward, it's going to have to go through the same hoops every other project does. It's going to go through the planning commission, it's, they're going to have to sit down with city staff, and then it's going to have to come to the council, so. Councilman Rush, I mean, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Laramore?
Thank you, sir. Um, the point that, uh, Councilman Rush raises and was echoed by Mayor Tesari about these issues not being the same, um, yeah, I am sympathetic to this, uh, to this, uh, proposal, um, but I'm of a mind to vote against it because of the threat that we won't get a park. That to be blackmailed into a decision is not something that, uh, I approve of, but that is not the reason that I would, how, that will not determine how I'm voting tonight. Um, i- i- if I do indeed vote in favor, it's not because of that. Um, I, in fact, I, I'm on the edge of voting against it just because of this threat, so, thank you.
I didn't hear any threats. So, uh-
Mr. Mayor, yes, since we did reopen the public comment portion-
I will reopen the public comment portion.
Ike Bootsma would like to speak as well.
Good evening. I afford this project mainly because he has agreed to come down, you know, from the high density to the medium density on this project, so I think he is trying to work with the city, even though, and no fault of his own, it was brought forward and became a city. But it was approved by the county, and I, I don't think it would be fair, uh, to not approve this project for bad reasons. A deal made before we became a city should really be honored and not changed for political reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, we will close the, uh, public here, the public comment.
I think we need, we have one more.
We do have one more?
I think, does, does the applicant want to speak? I think the applicant wants to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Van Loon?
I don't know that I'm going to change anything. I think you've gone way beyond what we're asking for. And am I being mean by saying I want to back what I have? Uh, I don't think so. And if I have to use the easement to get that, that's what I'm at. You go ahead and put it down, that's fine. I don't think anything I say can make anybody change anybody's mind. We're not going anywhere, we have no idea what a, what a plan like may be in the future. It may something may happen tomorrow to me or in my life, and I hope it's a takeover. My life is very sensitive. You know, with that every day, we don't know what the future holds. But I know that if I had to sell that property tomorrow, it has more value if it has less designation. And we have. And somehow we lost it. And I just think that I'll be put back where it is, and if I have to use the easement, uh, to get that, that's what I'm saying. And I'll answer any questions you have, but, I mean, it's pretty plain and simple. You get a, you get a, you buy the album, and anyone who plans ever comes to you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Loon. Councilwoman Plot?
I'm good.
Mayor Pro Tim? Councilman Rush? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Close the public hearing.
I, I would like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation, um, in light of fairness.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
No.
Councilmember Rigby?
No.
Councilmember Rush?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Laramore?
Yes.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion fails, two, three.
All right, we're going to move on to item eight point two. Consideration of revision to rules of decorum and procedures regarding public comment time limits.
Yes, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you tonight is for consideration revisions to the rules of decorum and procedures regarding public comment time limits. At the May tenth council meeting, comments were addressed regarding the public co-comment time limit that was allocated to members of the public on the agenda. Uh, since the city's incorporation in two thousand and ten, the city council has allotted two minutes to speak for any members of the public, addressing the council as a whole. It has also been a past practice of the council to allow members of the public to donate two minutes to another speaker, who then shall be allocated a maximum of six minutes to speak during public comments or on a specific agenda item. The same standard applies to members of the public speaking on behalf of public hearing items. The city clerk's office conducted a survey of ten surrounding cities, which is an attachment listed in your package tonight, uh, to specifically inquire on public comment time limit, whether time, uh, was donated and if it was allowed, and a maximum time a member of the public can speak. Uh, the overall synopsis of this survey, um, includes that many cities in part of their agenda include a second round of public comments, uh, at the beginning of the agenda and at the end of the agenda, and those who did not have the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the agenda can actually speak at the end of the agenda. Um, some cities also limit the total time of comments, and if there are many speakers, they will reduce the time limit. So for our case, um, those who allow two minutes, only fifteen people would be able to speak, meaning that we only allocate thirty minutes for the entire section of public comment. If we were to reduce it to one minute per person, thirty people would be able to speak. Um, some cities also authorize the presiding officer, either the mayor or the chair, to ask groups to select a single representative. Um, this is a current practice for our city in which a member of the public can donate their time to an individual, and they will be allocated a maximum of six minutes. Um, and one city also limits the number of speakers to only ten per meeting. Um, as you can see in your attachment tonight, most cities do not allow for donated time. Um, and two of the ten do allow for donated time, and the rest of the cities is at the mayor's discretion. Um, tonight, staff is requesting specific direction if the council wishes to revise its public comment rules. Um, at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions? Do we have any comment cards?
We do have one comment card, and that's from Ray Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, council, mayor, staff, and members of the audience. I brought this subject up, so I need to be here to follow up. As mentioned at the last council meeting, I surveyed over thirty cities, surrounding cities, and it was established three minutes of time was a standard or average of optimal public comment period. I bring to your attention those recent city of Eastville C I C I award media work released, and I thank you for writing to the public of this. And I want to reference, uh, this, this mission statement or, or value statement that the city has, and it states, "The city council values and encourages public participation in the governing process of, of this." If it is true, then it seems appropriate to debate the council vote in favor of spending the time for residents of Eastville. It's the right thing to do. Uh, again, the averages are three minutes. I'm asking for one minute for what we got, and I'm going to ask you to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any other comment cards?
There's no.
All right, we'll close the public comments, uh, council discussion.
I just have a comment about it. Thank you, staff, for, for looking into this, I know that, uh, it just goes to show, uh, how our staff works and operates, so thank you for, for all you did with this. I don't know that it's necessary to increase it, because we do allow, as most cities do not allow, we do allow donated time. We allow donated time up to six minutes. Um, I think we're just, we're tasking staff with something else additional to do, to rewrite this, to do this. I mean, even as minimal as it is, um, I think as you look at the, the information that was provided by staff, if we go to three minutes, I think that helps the one person, but if it's a hot topic, they can actually get donated time up to six minutes, which most of these cities that have the three-minute, they have no donated time. So it, it's actually a hindrance to increase the time to three minutes and to go with no donated time. The other thing is, is I like how on here too, it shows that some of these cities have it mayor's discretion. We have a great mayor and, and we trust him. Um, as was, uh, in, in the, uh, public comments earlier, um, I, I think it was Mr. Chang, was it? Um, I don't know if you heard, but the beeper went off while you were still talking. No one had you sit down immediately, so we're, we're very, um, lenient with it, accommodating, thank you. Um, as well as, if it is a hot topic, like I said, we do allow donated time, I think. So if we don't, or if we change it to increase one minute, then I think it's- then I think it's actually a hindrance because then we'd probably remove that donated time. That's just my comment.
Councilman Plott?
What I suggested, if we did three minutes, that you can only have one donated time and it's still equivalent to six minutes. So if we just said, hey, you can only have one donated time instead of two, that's what the rules is do. So you have one donated time, you have three minutes, then you have another three minutes. That's it. I just think two minutes sometimes can be a difficult, to make an argument in two minutes, can be somewhat challenging. I think you get an extra minute. I think it's a, it's a more feasible way to, to have your argument and then we mi- we minimize the amount of donation of time to make only one donation. Just, you know, that's just my thought, but, you know.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I think that both of these, uh, fellow, fellow council members, both are valid points. I think that we work, um, within what we have. We, and I think we do that very well. Um, I think that the concern, if we were to increase time, uh, is on big issues. You know, that the evening would go on forever if we ended up doing, uh, e- extending the time period. Uh, an example would be what happened with Walmart recently. And the issue is with that, where we had a lot of people coming to speak, they were repeating the same points over and over, uh, which, I mean, we needed everybody's input and that's important. Um, but it, they, it wasn't new insights for each of the comments. So I, I, I'm actually okay with keeping it is, keeping it as is. And, um, we also, if we have questions, we are able to then ask the speaker. A- any of the council members can do that. And I feel that works, um, but, uh, those are my thoughts.
Councilman Plott?
Yeah, and by the way, I'm only giving suggestions, I'll throw out ideas if there is an alternative. But is there also a way to maximize the total accumulation of minutes?
Yes.
Okay. And what would that, what can that, yeah?
Um, a lot, usually a lot of cities, they have total time thirty minutes. Sometimes what they do is they have total time thirty minutes, fifteen minutes prior at the beginning of the agenda, fifteen minutes at the end of the agenda. There, there's all these different options.
So in essence, we'd, we'd have ten speakers total at max?
Right.
In essence, we went three minutes?
Exactly.
Okay. And that could be problematic for a big, I mean, if you had something like Walmart, you'd have a problem. You'd have people yelling, you'd have people screaming at you.
Right, and the other thing too is that, in our rules, we're fairly flexible because the presiding officer, the mayor, can by majority vote through the rest of you, can alter those depending on the project. So, you know, a lot of cities have a very, very hard and fast rule and that's it. There's a lot of flexibility that you have that a lot of cities don't have, even though you have that two minute. Uh, depending on, on the, the project or, or the controversy, you allow. And this council does allow longer than two minutes many, many times.
Yeah, the mayor's fantastic as well.
Yeah.
Well, I think tonight was a perfect example of exercising that. I mean, we closed public comment, but yet we still let it back open. So I mean, we're, we're very accommodating. I mean, I, I don't mean to, I know Mr. Hernandez brought this up. I don't mean to say that it's not a concern, because any concern of a resident is a concern, but we do allow and we do accommodate our residents. I mean, I, I think our rules of decorum are for the nitty gritty little things. If we ever have to get to a point that we have to put the, enforce it in, but I mean, for the most part, we're, we're accommodating. We like you, Mr. Hernandez, so.
I heard a wise man say, refer to the policy, not the person. So I think the policy's in place, like you had mentioned, when we need it, if we need it. And, and that policy's in place to be uniform and, and, you know, provide direction to the city. But, you know, we can be accommodating or less accommodating. I was at a W R cog meeting last month and they limited public comment to one minute per person because there's about seventy-five people in the room. And it still went two hours. So, you know, it can, can be in yin and yang, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the current situation is if and when we, you know, we have a new mayor anytime soon, or not soon, but, you know, next cycle and, and they want to be more draconian, then we can take it up at that point in time.
Yeah, and just to, uh, you know, like Councilman Rigby said, I think, uh, tonight was, uh, that epitomizes our, uh, encouraging public participation. We, we do want it. These are simply, I look at them as guidelines so that we can kind of maintain order, uh, when it's necessary. Uh, I, I'm very liberal with, uh, allowing extra time for people to speak. So, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to increasing the time limit, but not here. As long as we're still utilizing the school facilities where we're actually on a timeframe where we have to exit the building by a certain time, I feel that we should keep the standard we have. Uh, when we have our own city hall, I'm more than open to, you know, hopefully I'll be around then, but I'm more than open to, uh, revising our, uh, public comment time.
In, in that we, we are actually discussing this and that it is agendized, um, so that we don't run into problems, a- actually, I, I'm gonna slightly adjust what I said earlier. I, I'd be okay with slightly increasing, but then going back to the point of Councilman Rigby and also a question that Councilmember Plott asked, uh, that we have a limit. We put in place a limit of how long public comments can go, uh, for, you know, thirty minutes on a specific item, wh- when the public hearing comes up or a public comment period, um, because of our limited timeframe, as the mayor just brought up, um, of needing to be out of here. Be, going back to that point, again, everybody's feedback is welcome, but when we're talking about a specific issue, not a whole lot of new comments were coming forward when we were talking about Walmart, for instance. And so, um, I throw that out there.
Well, again, I, I think part of the issue though, if you do go to three minutes and you max time in minutes at total thirty minutes or forty-five minutes, you're gonna have a lot of angry people that are not gonna be able to make comment. I just kind of thought about that. I, I, I brought this up to be on the agenda, but just for the sake of discussions, kind of feel the pulse of everything. I really didn't have a, an opinion one way or another, just to have a, a pulse on, you know, that's worth looking at and seeing, so.
What are we looking for?
Some direction.
Um, um, at this particular time, Mr. Mayor, we needed just a consensus of whether you want to go forward or not.
I would say we stay with what we currently have.
Is anybody on the council, anybody up here in favor of moving forward with, with coming up with a, a revision to the time element?
I'm fine with the way it is, but I personally have no problem with three minutes. I mean, three minutes, you can donate time maximum, six minutes, six minutes.
That's fine.
Six one way, half dozen the other, but, yeah, that's fine with me.
Would, would you be comfortable with a ceiling?
Uh, like a total ceiling?
Yeah.
No, I actually would be very much against that.
Mayor Tassari, for the record, our council rules of decorum at the moment currently state that all public comment portions of the agenda should not exceed thirty minutes total. So that rule is already in place.
Like I said, we're very liberal with.
Pretty consistent, we're pretty consistent breaking that rule.
Yeah.
We're a lot more lenient to most of this.
I'm sorry?
A lot more lenient to most of this.
When you have, when you have a room full of people, I mean, it's, I, I think with Walmart, as Councilman Plott said, it would have worsened the situation if, it seems very nanny-ish. Oh, our, our time is up, sorry. And you have fifteen people that still want to talk, I mean, that would not go over well.
So maybe the suggestion is just go three minute. You have only one, you can only share your, only one person can share your time and no ceiling.
So do we have a consensus? Why don't we give staff direction? You can come up with a few of those options and bring it back to us and we can choose one. How's that? Is that, is there, does, do we have a consensus? Is that what we'd like to do?
Yes.
Anybody?
What are the options?
I'm not clear. I think, I think we need a little more direction than that because there's, there's a whole bunch of different alternatives that we can come up with. I think would be better if you gave us at least some thresholds to work with and then you can pick one, two, or three.
So if we can decide on one tonight, we can actually.
You, you, that's right, that's what I'm, we're asking for tonight.
Here's one for, here's one for starters, and just three, three minutes. Can only share your time, one shared time, no ceiling.
That's one suggestion.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Three minute.
Three minute.
You only share your time once.
You only share your time once?
And no ceiling.
No, no time limit on the total time, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Total time per com- per public comments or total time per person?
Total for public comments.
Yeah, the, the cumulative of total public comments.
Total time per person.
Okay, so right now, we have a cumulative, we have a cumulative maximum of thirty minutes. You want to get rid of that?
We don't, we don't comply with it anyways, so.
What's that?
We, we don't comply with it anyways. I mean, if we're in here, you know, we can, is Ted gone? Ted's gone. We can blame it on the school. You know, you say, we gotta, we gotta, I mean, and, and the mayor did a great job with it last year. We gotta be out of here by eleven fifteen because, you know, we got a janitor that can't work past that time and the school's got to close up and all that stuff. And so, you know, when we get our own facility and can't come soon enough, I mean, yeah, I've, I've been at council meetings that go to two in the morning.
And, and.
You ask a lot of questions.
If I could clarify.
Sometimes, and I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there's a direct correlation with the councils that televise their meetings.
Yes.
Uh, they like to talk.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, i- if I could put in the context where I'm coming from on this, I, I attend a lot of council meetings outside of this for my job. And, um, going to council meetings where they do go late into the night and it's because of public comment. And, um, and again, I, I truly believe everybody should be heard, but, uh, it's just a matter of, you know, people have to get back up again in the morning. So that, that's where I was coming from on my discussion of limits. Uh, they, they had to implement this. It, the reason we're talking about this now, this is an ideal time to talk about it, when this issue isn't in front of, when there's not a contentious issue in front of the council. When there is, and then you decide you're gonna implement new rules, then that causes more problems. So, um, I wanted to put in the context my comments from before. So thank you.
What about coming back later and asking for four minutes? Where does this stop?
But, I mean, Ray could have made a better argument if he had one more minute though.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rigby? Did you have a suggestion on?
I'm fine, I'm fine either way. I mean, I just, I think we've done a pretty good job, and especially you with controlling the meetings. I mean, I don't, I don't see the need to change it, but I'm not opposed to if we were to change it. I mean, I, we've been very flexible. I just don't know on the staff's side, what is, what does that entail?
We, we'll just do an amendment to the rules of decorum to change the public comment. That's, that's all of it.
So it's just very minimal then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way.
So.
So I would, I, I agree with Councilman Plott. We'll give a three, three minutes.
Share one time.
And just one share.
One share.
With a total of six minutes maximum.
And no cap?
Yeah, we're not doing that anyways.
For total public comments?
Pardon?
For total public comments.
Yeah, there'd be no cap.
Yes.
The cap for speaker is six minutes.
Well, yeah, but there's, there's a total cap of all public comment.
Yeah, that's, no.
With the cap that we need to be out by ten thirty. Well, that's, yeah. Actually, it's ten fifteen.
Here's my, here's my problem.
It's ten fifteen.
The thirty minutes applies to each item on the agenda.
Uh, no, I believe it, it applies to total public comments.
So if we have several people come in before we start running through the agenda, just for general public comments, they go for thirty minutes? We don't give anybody any speaking time throughout the, if they want to speak? That's.
It, it doesn't apply to applications that come before you.
Right, but whenever we have somebody that wants to speak on a specific agenda item, the same rule applies.
Yes.
But what if we've already?
No, 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 no. The, the thirty minute rule applies to public comment, the total public comment. It, it, it doesn't apply to like if you had a Walmart and a public hearing and you had fifty people coming here and it takes longer than thirty minutes. It wouldn't apply to that. It wouldn't apply to agendized items where you have an applicant and, because part of the process is due process. You have the applicant, you have the public comment, you have the rebuttal, and, and it, it can apply to that. This only applies to public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
Right, but the public, the person from the public who wants to comment on a specific agenda item is still subject to the same rules that we implement. They don't get three minute maximum or two minute maximum?
If, if it's, if it's a public comment that's not on the agenda, they're subject to the thirty minute rule.
So I think he's asking, so at the beginning, at the beginning when we have our public comment, that's where we have the thirty minute ceiling?
That's where you have the thirty minutes.
That's not affecting, so for instance, tonight, agenda item, whatever this is, eight point two.
Anything that's on the agenda doesn't, the thirty minute doesn't apply.
But the three minute and the six minute will still apply?
Yes, exactly. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, yes, you're right. That, that, that applies across the board.
Okay.
Yes. The cap only applies to public comment, that's. Thank you for, I, I finally got what you meant, I'm sorry.
With, with that being said, I'd almost, I don't know, I almost think that it is good to keep the cap because otherwise you can get people coming in for a hundred different topics. And if we don't have a cap. Because as of that, that means, I mean, for instance, it wouldn't, the cap wouldn't apply to the Walmart issue. So agenda i- agenda.
Agendized.
Agendized, however you say that word.
Agendized.
Items do not have the cap for the.
Right.
Overall, for the individual they do.
And, and let's, let me try to kind of put this in, in context of why that is, okay? If you go back to the whole, um, the Brown Act and agendized items, you have to look at what's the main purpose of the, of the city council meeting? It's to conduct the city's business, correct? And so, when you have agendized items, those are items that you're specifically tasked with considering to make a decision. And those, those are part of your business. Public comment is viewed as g- giving members of, of the public an opportunity to air grievances, concerns to you, but it's not, they're not agendized items. So what there is, there's a balancing, uh, process of those items which are not on the agenda. Because remember, you can't act on items that are not on the agenda. He's just, you have to just listen and say, "Thank you very much," unless you want to put them on the agenda later on. The priority is your agenda items. The public comment portion is just for you to hear. So that's why they put caps on those, so it doesn't interfere or, or halt your ability to conduct business on the agenda. That's where it came from.
With that being said, I think, I, I would recommend that we do a cap.
I agree.
I agree.
Thirty minute cap still.
So we would leave it the way it is?
Leave it in place, but we're gonna butt with the three minute and three minutes.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I'm for, I, I, I support that. You have the gap, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Is there anybody, anybody that object to that? All right, then that's your direction.
We'll bring that back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification as well too, because even the public hearing portion of the rules and decorum state that each member of the public can have two minutes to speak. Are we changing that portion on the rules and decorum to reflect three minutes as well?
Yes. We got it.
We got it.
All right, with that, we will move on to item eight point three, the most exciting item on our agenda. We're gonna receive us just a dynamic and, and entertaining presentation by our finance director, Mr. Riley, on landscaping and lighting maintenance districts and the benefit assessment district number two zero one four dash two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I can see, uh, Mayor Pro Tim is already too excited. He had to leave. Too much excitement. The recommendation before you this evening is to adopt four resolutions. Two resolutions which, which would be the approving of the annual engineers' report and two resolutions declaring, uh, the intention of the city to levy and collect assessments of, for these districts. On an annual basis, we bring before the city council, uh, the landscaping and lighting maintenance districts and the benefit assessment district. And these are special financing districts established to fund specific maintenance activities. Properties within these districts receive special benefit from the maintenance activities and are assessed annually to fund those maintenance activities. The annual budget and assessment calculation are prepared and presented in the form of an annual engineers' report. Then the resolutions that I mentioned. Then the resolutions that I mentioned, uh, to approve the annual's engineer report and to declare the city's intention, intention to levy and collect assessments are presented and approved, and then a set time and place for a public hearing is also determined. So, once these are approved today, the next step in the process is to hold a public hearing on June twenty eighth and order the levy and collection of assessments. And then those assessments are submitted to the county auditor for collection. Also, um, this year, as was requested, we have included a copy of the, uh, we have the City of Eastville map that was handed to you that shows where all these, uh, assessment districts are. In your engineers' report is, is also another copy of this map, but also small individual maps of each zone and everything like that. But this map shows you where everything is, uh, related to these assessment, uh, and benefit assessment districts within the city. Uh, that includes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Just clarify, I'm assuming the balance of developed property are under CFDs managed by the district? Um, the balance of developed properties. All, all the holes that aren't colored? All the holes? Yeah. Uh, they aren't. It's, yeah, they're not. New development is, uh, CFDs are being developed for new development, but for existing development, if it's not in one of these LMD or BAD, uh, districts, are not covered at this time. But they're covered under CFDs maintained by?
Yes.
Yes, that was, sorry, if I didn't clarify my question. Oh, okay, my apologies. If it's not here, it's J C S D?
Yes.
More or less? Okay. Sorry. I, I know we've had this before in a couple developments. What is the decision tree, I guess, on new developments, on whether they're forming new CFDs to be maintained by J C S D or they're coming under the city's LMD? Is that more or less a? Why do my questions always get smirks? I mean, is that purely a business decision on the part of the developer? I, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the comparative rate structure between us and the district.
So, uh, if you recall, uh, council members, with the discussion about the, uh, streetlights, we had also, uh, gotten consensus from the council to not create any more landscape and lighting maintenance districts that would be managed by our colleagues, uh, the special district, J C S D. Uh, because we do have situations where they have created CFDs which are tied to most, some of them tied to park maintenance and operations. Um, but they also have LMDs and LLMDs that, that rightfully, uh, oversee projects and property that are in the city. Um, as ongoing measure moving forward, we, we wanna kind of separate that. We wanna make sure that we're in control of our landscape, that we're in control of our lighting maintenance district. So this is, this is part of it. Um, but you, you are correct. There, there, the district does still create some CFDs, but I think they're actually going to a new format of, uh, CSDs. Is that right?
Uh, no, here in, um, we, we had been setting up LLMDs, but, uh, at the advice of our consultant, uh, MBS, they suggested that in the future that we just set up CFDs. They give us a lot more flexibility in a CFD than, uh, what's in a lighting and landscape maintenance district. So that's where we'll be going in the future, and as the city manager said, instead of letting the, the, the J C S D have those CFDs, we are gonna have them here in the city.
So, I, I'm sorry, to, to, just to, to make sure we're on the same page. So the, the, right now, we're, this is, uh, an LMD, but moving forward, instead of it being a, a landscape, lighting and maintenance district, it will be a CFD that covers the landscape, lighting and maintenance district.
For, for new development.
For new development.
These LMDs will stay forever, or until they expire, um, as LLMDs, but anything new
No, correct.
will be a CFD. And do they have different statutory authority? What's, what's the, what's the difference?
Well, th- there's, and that's a good point. Statutorily, they, they operate fairly similar. It's the scope and flexibility. The CFD, as, as James was talking about, gives a little bit more broader, uh, authority because it's a community facilities district. It can cover a little more things than just landscape and lighting. But as far as the mechanism, as far as usually the, the lifespan, they're both pretty much the same. One just has a lot, is broader.
So that's why, cause I know the county operates under CSAs?
Yes.
And, and each CSA is different, you know, one just covers sewer and one provides
Correct.
sheriff and code enforcement and all these enhanced services, so it sounds like it's a little bit similar. But I'm assuming that's why the CFDs can cover the parks and the landscaping and the recycled water if it comes and more, more stuff.
Right, and, and they, the CFDs even cover infrastructure, if, if that's, if that's what, what's needed. So it, it is a little bit more broad in the ability to utilize them.
Okay. Thank you for your indulgence, Councilman Plot.
Yeah, I think you actually just answered my question, but when you said the term flexibility, you're just saying that you have the, the ability to, when you get revenues through the CFDs, we just have a broader scope of where we can allocate that money to with, other than an LMD, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. When you form the CFD, um, you can have a lot of different things. Some cities, um, part of their CFD, it might be for maintenance, but then part of it may be for covering some of the service for police costs in that particular CFD area, or for, for fire protection services. It gives a whole lot more flexibility than what a lighting and landscape maintenance district does. Like I worked in a community, uh, Mead Valley, which is an unincorporated area, and they voted, it was an existing community, they voted in an additional assessment for another sheriff's officer. And so it was, and then, so the county then allocated, like we kinda do, an additional deputy, cause they were having issues, so. I'm assuming an existing community
Yes.
could do that if they, like, smaller scale, the entry monuments.
Yes.
You know, were included in the assessment, so they've wanted to add that, they could roll that in.
Correct, that's true. It's, it's basically a benefit that, that affects a particular area.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to up, consider each one of those resolutions independently.
Okay, so I, I have a quick question on this, just for my clarification, and I may be the only one that doesn't fully understand this. This is us to add an additional levy? Is that what we're looking to do?
Well, in this case, these are existing levies. They're, they're not a new levy. So on your property tax bill, if you live in one of these areas, it's already on your bill. So it's just to continue it, um, ongoing.
Okay. And how long is that continuation?
I'm not sure, John, is there a limit or?
Well, there, there's, there's a total limit, but keep in mind is that for maintenance, it can go on for a lot longer. You know, it's usually for new, um, improvements, if it's under this, but usually under these maintenance districts, they just last because it's designed for maintenance.
Yeah.
That's what it's designed for.
So with these resolutions saying for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, do we have to renew it every year then?
Every year.
So it comes back to us every year?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion on, uh, resolution number one.
So I moved.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Can I get a, uh?
I would move on resolution number seventeen dot X X, number two, as itemizing the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I would make a motion to approve, uh, resolution number three as itemizing the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lormore? Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Can I get a motion on number four?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve as in the agenda item number, or?
Second.
Yeah, number four.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
We'll move on to item number nine, city managers' report and staff reports.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Uh, a few updates for you today. Um, at the last city council meeting, you had directed me to engage the sheriff's department to, uh, obtain statistics, crime statistics that we could publish moving forward. Um, I have spoken to Captain Hedge as well as Chief Horton and, uh, have made that request, and it is going through the process right now for approval. And once that is approved, then we will sit down and develop a format for which those can be published. And I will bring that format back, I'll bring that back to you before, um, before we do our first, I guess, our first publishing of statistics, of those data. Um, like to, um, give the council also some very quick, brief updates that were provided at the town hall meeting. Uh, the Limonite interchange construction is going to be starting in, uh, March two thousand and eighteen. If you recall, this is a project that was roughly forty-eight million dollars underfunded. And with the passage of SB one thirty-two, we have received the funding, uh, to see that project, uh, actually kick off. Um, it's, uh, projected to be an eighteen month project to two years. And it will not be done simultaneously with the Hamner Bridge. And I, I know that's been a, a major concern for council to, to make sure that we are coordinating projects. Um, and so, and we are, we've expressed that concern and, and, um, the Hamner Bridge is on a different timetable. Uh, so once the Limonite interchange is complete, then they will be, they're still in the environmental process for Hamner Bridge, so that, that won't start until, uh, Limonite interchange is complete. Um, however, the I fifteen express lanes that, uh, are going to be built from Kahalko all the way up to the sixty freeway will be, uh, under construction simultaneously with the Limonite interchange. And we have asked to try to coordinate those projects with the, uh, the project managers to make sure that they're not hitting , uh, critical points at exactly the same location, thereby causing problems with each of these, those construction projects. So, so we're gonna be working through those details. Again, the, um, the Hamner Bridge and that is also part of the funding from SB one thirty-two. Um, as the council knows, uh, SB one thirty was signed, so we will be getting, uh, VLF money. Um, this is not a restoration of the nineteen point one million dollars that we lost. This is, uh, a funding stream moving forward, a passive funding stream moving forward. Uh, but, uh, according to the calculations, which seem to be somewhat all over the board, you know, press enterprise article says three million, someone else says five point three, then we see four point two. Um, we have not received anything definitively from Sacramento that's stating yet, this is exactly what you're going to receive. However, um, we have been told not to expect our first payment until the end of May in two thousand and eighteen. So, uh, I would like to, uh, share with the council that we are, um, and Joe, I'm sorry if I'm stealing your thunder here. It is Public Works Week, so, uh, maybe I'll let you give that update. Yes, Public Works Week. So we have, uh, Aaliyah had put some, uh, very, uh, creative posts on, uh, social media about Public Works Week, so I hope you enjoy those, but, um, we, we are finalizing the installation of the traffic signal at Summer and Sixty-Fifth. So if you are getting questions about that construction that's taking place at that intersection, that would be in reference to a new traffic signal that should be complete and operational by the end of June. Um, we're also finalizing the installation of the radar speed signs. There's twelve signs, ten of which have been installed near school zones, uh, one on Limonite, not in a school zone, as well as one on Schleisman. Um, lastly, um, uh, wanna share that the, uh, median home price in Eastville has bumped up again, according to our latest report from, uh, HDL. The median home prices are now, in Eastville, are five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The average home sale price is five hundred and thirty-four. Uh, first quarter of two thousand and seventeen, we had a hundred and fifty-two homes close. Uh, the housing market is slowing down. Um, the total number of sales in ni- in two thousand and sixteen was nine hundred and fifteen, which is down from the previous year. And, uh, Eastville's new population, according to the California Department of Finance, is sixty-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen. And that is up two point two one percent from two thousand and sixteen. So we're still growing. And, um, I believe that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have one question. Uh, actually, I just had an email today and I, I knew the amount that was allocated for the I fifteen Limonite, but I couldn't remember what it was for the Hamner Bridge. I thought it was in the sixty millions, but do you know what that number was?
So, so the Hamner Bridge does have, uh, a lot of federal funds that, that were, uh, part of the planning process. I believe it's fifty-eight million dollars of federal dollars.
But from SB one thirty-two.
So from SB one thirty-two, it's, uh, six point two million dollars, and that was, uh, specifically to cover the local match, the local match that, uh, was required.
Pretty off. I was, I was off.
Oh.
I'm about to correct that statement.
It's about a six percent match, more or less, that we had to make, or I guess Norco or Craig, the county, to get that funded. So that specific amount was, was part of the horse trading, if you will,
Yeah.
for SB one to get that in. Um, to follow up, I had read a brief outline of, uh, the administration's budget proposal, and I was a little bit concerned that it might affect, you know, there was talk that it was affecting federal funding for transportation, and it is. Um, but following up with RCTC, Aaron Haake, and he got back to us in, in the city this morning. It's been a long day. This morning at like seven thirty saying that, you know, basically, it's not, there's no perception that the administration's budget will change any of that, cause it cut the Tiger program, which is a special allocation, and, and it cut some other, um, non-transportation trust fund programs, and according to RCTC, this is in the transportation trust fund. So, don't think there's gonna be any, plus, it's not even law yet, so don't think there's gonna be any, um, changes to that. But, just to augment Ms. Nissen's comments, you know, I was gonna talk about it a little bit. The I fifteen, are we having a presentation in the ninety-one of the I fifteen?
Um, well, actually, we would like to, I believe it's Jul- July twelfth, there's, we are lining up several presentations. Uh, one is going to be the I fifteen express lanes, uh, one is going to be the Hamner Bridge, and the other one is gonna be the Limonite interchange. Because they, there, there is some correlation, I think it's important to take a look at them together in totality and, uh, provide a, a very, uh, comprehensive update to the city council.
I agree, and SB one created, I'm getting the acronym wrong, the Riverside County Transportation Efficiency Corridor, I think. Um, and Mayor from RCTC is on that, the Caltrans District Gate Director is on that, a couple landowners, a couple sequel attorneys are on that. Um, it, it's this, this group that was appointed by the state to basically get all this money spent before twenty twenty-three. And so one of the big issues, and we had a, a presentation on Monday, I think, um, Limonite and the fifteen is happening, I fifteen is gonna be happening at the same time. That's the, uh, expansion within the right-of-way, and the Hamner Bridge is, is coming in. And then also for, from a regional standpoint, um, the Harupa Avenue, I think it's great separation, is happening. And then on the other end of the region or the zone, uh, McKinley is happening as well. I guess McKinley is gonna have a lot of problems. They don't even think they can fund McKinley with that allocation, cause, um, there's a lot of- um, there's a lot of right-of-way that needs to be allocated, and there's, there's this railroad thing that runs through there. So that's kind of a non-issue for us, but a lot of things are happening within this specific area, and it all needs to happen in the next five and a half years, which, from a transportation standpoint, is a, yeah. It's, it's, I mean, ninety-one took thirty years, so, anyways, I think it's good that we get those, yeah, it's done. A lot of people are happy about it, but it's done. So I think it's good to get those lined up and give everyone some clarification, so.
So, uh, I think Joe's, Joe's gonna be working and coordinating all of those, uh, meetings, or, excuse me, all of those presentations for city council. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any other staff comments?
Oh, yes, I'm sure there are always staff comments.
No? All right. Council comments?
Um, Aaliyah, did you have, uh, some public information officer?
She, she was hiding behind Ike.
Not getting up.
Yeah, I couldn't see her.
Good evening, council members. I just wanted to provide a quick update. Um, on May sixth, we partnered with Waste Management and the school district to have the community cleanup event, and I just wanted to report, um, it was a huge success. I believe we had nineteen roll-off bins that were dumped from that one day in a four-hour timeframe. Um, the statistics that came back from Waste Management was, uh, that was two point two-two tons of metal, uh, six point eight tons of e-waste, twenty-six tons of solid waste, and ninety-eight hundred pounds of shredding that was all hauled away from City of Eastville residents. So, I would, uh, like to thank Waste Management for their partnership on that, and all the staff that came out, especially Michelle, who was traveling, um, from state to state and still made it out to, to volunteer her time amongst other staff members that were there, Steven, myself, and others, so it was, it was actually kind of fun, and it was cool outside that day. Also wanted to let the council members know that we did have a, uh, partner CERT class, the Community Emergency Response Team class, uh, last weekend, um, with Riverside County Emergency Management Department, and we did have twelve members, uh, including some city staff that attended the free course. Uh, didn't sound like much, it was twelve, but it was a very good class, from what I'm told. Uh, there was a lot of interaction, and it's twelve more Eastville residents that are prepared for emergencies or disasters, which is a great thing. And seeing as how I haven't heard from Decrillite, I'm assuming our military banners will be installed either tomorrow or Friday. I was told it was guaranteed to be this week, um, Friday being close of business, so we're really hoping we've got some anxious family members that would really like to be present for those, so we're trying to coordinate that, so family members can be present as well. And that's all I have. Oh, Picnic in the Park is Ju, uh, June twenty-third, fourth and fifth this year, um, at Eastville Community Park. So it's also on the community calendar.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rush?
Yeah, just to follow up, and, and I'll provide this to staff and, um, if we can get it out to everybody. On, on SB one thirty-two, uh, it is law, even though the legislation itself has not been signed. The money is already allocated in the budget, so it is basically, it has the, the force of law at this point, and the money can be spent at this point. Um, I did not know that, but learned that on Monday. So this is a little fact sheet, um, I'll just kind of run through some of the particulars, and, and it's, it's a little bit interesting, right, wrong, or indifferent. Um, it took about five things that the county has been trying to do for this region and gobble them all up and put them into our corridor, and we can do them all to get this money, um, uh, spent. Um, it allows design-build, which is, the unions typically don't like that, and allows design-build, which is done on the ninety-one. Um, we can, well, we have the ability, which I wasn't too crazy about, to sole-source construction contracts for, John's head perked up. Uh, not the city, but RCTC.
Okay.
Um, sole-source construction contracts, uh, based upon the, uh, Commission's sole-source contracting authority to get things done. Um, so I don't know how that will go over well. Expands authority for construction manager, uh, on the state highway, so basically allows the commission to be the construction manager for the state highway, which was, what was done on, um, the ninety-one as well. And allows AB contracting authority, which, uh, is just a different, you know, cost, time, budget type thing, so. It allows a lot of things to get these things done, um, in time, and we can basically start spending the money now, if we wanted to. So hopefully, you know, I'd like to try to get us integrated as much as possible, and I'll be keeping, you know, my ear to the ground. The other issue, in true government fashion, is after we learned all that good stuff, um, there was a presentation on how we still don't have enough money. And, uh, uh, I'm not joking here, there, uh, is a push to put a increased sales tax measure for Riverside County on the ballot for November of two thousand and eighteen. Um, right now, we have Measure A, uh, there was Measure K two thousand and twelve, I think, that didn't increase the, uh, sales tax, just extended the, the timeframe. So Measure, uh, A was expiring, and it extended it for another twenty, thirty years. This would be an additional amount on top of that, specifically for Riverside County, for all of the other unfunded, um, road systems. So there's approximately three hundred and sixty-one billion dollars worth of unfunded road systems, bless you, um, within the county, and that's outside of the zone, outside of Measure A projects. Those are the local projects that cities and counties like to do, like, you know, I don't know if it ever got on the TUF network, but, for example, if it wasn't Limonite to, um, Euclid, or Limonite to Kimball, uh, you know, our, um, Schleisman Interchange, that's, you know, kind of not on the network at this point, but still in the general plan. All those other things that are kind of tertiary and, and fourth-rate projects, um, all throughout the county that are still unfunded. The, uh, seventy-one connector on the ninety-one, they're supposed to, you know, so you have that weird little corkscrew, there's supposed to be a big flyover from the ninety-one eastbound to the seventy-one northbound. That's like a hundred and twenty million dollars. There's no money for that. So there was a fancy consultant with a fancy report, um, he did the Measure M for LA Metro in LA County, which passed with two-thirds. Hmm, and, and there was a lot of support for this moving forward, um, from the committee, so. That's coming down the line here in the future, more taxes for transportation purposes. So they think they can get, uh, the two-thirds vote that's needed, um, but if that piece of legislation, uh, changes that threshold, then they'd only need fifty-plus one, so. Good news.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilman Rigby?
Yes, just a couple of things. Thank you, um, thank you to staff and the Sheriff's Department for getting together on, uh, providing statistics. I look forward to, to that. Um, speaking of that, I know that there has been talk in the community of, um, marijuana growhouses recently, and I don't know, uh, just from my experience, I haven't seen them for the last few years, and just the last few months, it seems like they've been popping up more, so I don't know if they are. Um, I do know that those are in correlation to, for the majority of them, to rentals, so I don't know if there's anything that we can do, if we can ask staff and Sheriff's Department to reevaluate, um, our process of, of dealing with those, of, um, of rental registration, what we're doing, um, just to see how that's being taken care of. So I don't know if staff and Sheriff's Department can get together and, and discuss and see what we could do, um, to further the, or to, uh, look into those, 'cause I know that that's a concern. I've had a few people just this week that have talked to me about. Um, another, uh, just a question that, uh, has come up was, I know that a while back, we, um, I guess we, I think we approved the garden at the fire station, or the, the orchard at the fire station. Just trying to see maybe, uh, maybe in the next staff report, if you aren't prepared now, just to kind of give us an update where that's at. Um, timeline about that, when we can expect that to get going. Um, I don't know, Joe, you kind of perked up. Is that something that you can share now, or, or next meeting, or?
We can, uh, uh, we're working on that, Councilman Rigby, but we can provide you with the report, uh, at the next meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you. Um, and then, I don't know, uh, council imply on the Parks Commission. I'll, I'll share just a few quick things, real quick. Um, they are working on the grass conditions. It's been a concern that's been brought up by us, as well as by the district, uh, board members themselves. They had a big, um, consultant come to the community park and gave them a big laundry list of things to do, so they're trying to see what they can do to, uh, to fix the grass there, and then they will move on to the other parks in fixing the grass. They are starting the widening project on the east driveway, um, to, to widen that, to make it easier, uh, um, ingress, egress to the park. One of the things that I did want to bring up to the council and kind of get a, a feel from the council, talking about phase two of the park, they have the four diamonds for the softball that has been presented, or that has been approved. Um, I questioned where that came from, um, and they said it was, what was it, two out, or three out of the four previous JCSD board members just wanted them. Data did not support those, so I asked if we could revisit that, and they said yes. Um, the parks haven't been built. My thought is, is if Data doesn't support them, then why are we building them? So I don't know.
Against recommendation, too.
Yeah, it was against recommendation. It, it wasn't recommended, they build four of them, um, but they, they went ahead, so. Um, I don't know if the council has any input on that, um. So that, that's all I had on, that's, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, sir. Um, a couple of updates. Uh, it, it was great to finally get one thirty signed, get the money back to the City of Eastville, although I must say that it was a little bit bittersweet, and, uh, the governor, when he came down to sign that bill and her, to sign the bill in Harupa Valley, was, um, he's still, I, I, you know, he was a little bit off-putting. Uh, that, that's, that was my take, um, at the meeting. Um, he was kind of condescending, um, during the discussion. And, uh, but it was, it's, I'm very happy this was a long and hard-fought battle, and we finally have money that will be coming back to the city, so that's the good news. Um, moving on, um, I'm happy to announce, well, we had a SCAGS, Southern California Association of Governments. Um, we had our ledge committee meeting, and, um, I was very pleasantly surprised, uh, they announced that they had made me the chair of the committee. So, um, that, that was the first time, uh, chairing that committee, uh, last Tuesday. And, um, so looking forward to a strong year ahead. And, um, speaking of legislation, coming up, um, this is for all council members, on June, June seventh, um, we will, the League of California Cities will be having a legislative, uh, committee. So if you would like to participate in that, it's gonna be taking place in Marina Valley at nine AM, and, um, I have actually just stepped away from being chair on that committee, but, uh, I will be s- still serving there. And the point of this, uh, meeting is to help inform the policy committee members when they go to their policy committees at the state level with the league, um, to go over some of the bills, and also, that will be at these committee meetings, um, and get feedback from the rest of the, uh, county, uh, the other elected officials.
Would they?
Yes, sir. That, that's gonna be on Wednesday, June seventh, uh, nine AM, if you are interested. I, it, it's gonna be over at their city hall, basically. Um, so there's that. Um, I'm gonna leave it there, 'cause it's been a long day, but thank you.
Councilman Pla? All right, well, since, I'll, I'll leave it to the fun stuff on the Eastville Parks Commission, so I got the two flyers here. Uh, so we have Cons on the Park Series, so begins June thirtieth, and then every subsequent, subsequent week after that, up until August twenty-fifth. This is probably one of their best events in Eastville, a lot of great events, but this is one of the best ones. And then also you have the Picnic in the Park coming up, June twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. Um, one other announcement, I, well, RTA meeting is tomorrow, so I had the, I already did the announcement from the last meeting. But kind of one cool thing, um, so they do the American Public Transportation Association, they do this thing nationwide where they take these, basically the best bus drivers, and they do a rodeo, and they have them drive buses, they do these obstacle courses, and it's a national thing, or actually internationally, you have people from Mexico and all over the United States. And so there's a gentleman named Kyle Jones, who is an RTA bus driver, who won the whole thing. And first time ever in our, in RTA's history that they actually represented, uh, RTA and actually won this whole thing. So he's the number-one bus driver in the nation, and in, in the world, I guess, you wanna put it that way. So, um, it's kind of a cool thing to celebrate that, so, but, uh, that's all I have. It's all fun, fun news for me.
Is that like those videos where they're driving on a cliff?
They have like, they have like little crazy turns and spin, like, you could tip one of those things over, it's pretty easy, I mean, these obstacle courses are aggressive.
Now, why don't we get him to drive the bus for the CIF parade?
Oh, that'd be good. He's probably, he's, well, now, it's too late. He's probably worth a lot of money now, so. All right, thank you for your comments. Uh, with that, we're gonna move on to item eleven, closed session. Uh, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and recess to the closed session for eleven point one, public employee performance evaluation.